We will come to order. The first item of business tonight is an executive session. That is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation under general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A three concerning a claim known as Silva versus the town of Stoughton. I make a finding and declare that it would be against the interest of the town to discuss this matter of strategy in an open session and that it is appropriate to do so in an executive session. Is there a motion?
So made.
Second.
On the motion to go into executive session, Mr. McCrisky.
Aye.
Mr. Kavy.
Yes.
Ms. Howe. Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So pardon me, we will go into executive session. We will return public session of the meeting. So now I think the screen will go blank and the board will go into executive, a virtual executive session. Thank you. Good evening. The meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty will return to order. We just completed an executive session. The meeting opened at six forty-five. It's not on the agenda. Joe, do you have a flag there? Would you like to leave us in the pledge?
Well, I could, I can move one in the background. It would be one second. Does it work?
Yeah, it's perfect. Is this Congressman Mocley's flag?
Yeah, this Congressman Mocley's flag. Every time I touch it, I think of him.
There you go. Go ahead, Joe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. I would, I would like to move first to the first item on the agenda for the public session, which is resumption of the public hearing for the Park Street sewer issue. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So made.
Second.
Mr. McCrisky.
Aye.
Mr. Kavy.
Yes.
Ms. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So I'll declare the public hearing now open again. Let me begin by recognizing Mark Tisdale for an update on the project and then we'll proceed if there's anything else from staff. And after that, take as many comments as people have until the conclusion of the hearing. Mr. Tisdale, are you here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, yeah, not much more of an update from last week. We did update the slides with some more betterment options as you requested. As you know, tonight's meeting is to discuss the sewer connection policy, which is the policy that determines how long it, it takes somebody to tie in the mandatory connection for that. And then the betterment policy, and that determines how the selectmen will fund the project in the future. So there's two different policies on the plate for tonight.
All right.
I do have a PowerPoint if you'd like me to go through that, but I'm not sure when that's the appropriate time is.
Now would be it. This is just bringing us up to date in the summary of the, of the policies, right?
Yeah, it's pretty similar to last week. It's pretty, pretty quick.
Yep, it's the, there was about eight pages in our packet. Is that what you're, you're talking?
Yeah.
It's your PowerPoint?
Yep.
Please do that so as we have, my purpose is not to delay the public, but so when the public is heard, they, they're, they've got the same information that you provided to us. So I would appreciate if you could go through that.
Ziad, you want to start off?
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, everyone. For those who don't know me, my name is Ziad Carey. I am a consultant engineer with Environmental Partner Group. I am managing this project from a technical perspective and I'm working with the Department of Public Works and Engineering on this design for this sewer expansion project. So really nothing changed. The, what you see here on the map is a phase, the phase one of the project encompasses about seventy-three properties, twenty-eight, twenty-eight of which are commercial and industrial and commercial properties and the rest, the forty-five is residential properties. The sewer flow along this portion, the, this first phase of the project, so Park Street is an elevated, there's a high point in the middle of Park Street. Somewhere around Ash Street, the flow would go down towards the center by gravity and from Ash Street down south, it would flow down through Tenth and then into the industrial park where it would be pumped. With a, two submersible pump stations, a small pump station located within the park would be pumping the, the flow through a six-inch force main going up Tenth and then up to discharge by gravity onto Park Street. Phase one will, will have a one pump station, which consists of two submersible pumps, a underground wet well and a generator for emergency, for emergency power. The initial cost that we came up with back in December of twenty-seven, twenty nineteen, based on the subsurface profiling and cost estimating that we use for similar projects and experience, we came up with overall costs of seven point three million dollars. The construction breakdown, just general task for the pipeline and the pump station, you're looking at almost four point five million bucks. We added twenty percent contingency just for the unforeseen conditions, even though we feel pretty confident that the rock profile had been determined. We know what the depth of the sewer is going to be and we pretty much understand what the limitation is going to be in terms of construction. So we have a good healthy contingency over a million dollars there and which will bring the project cost to about six point five and construction phase services, about eight hundred thousand for the overall number of seven point four. Mark, if you want to scroll down a little bit to talk about the timeframe, I don't know if you could see it, the previous slide, I don't know if you could see it, but the, we, we were contracted to design phase one and phase two of this project. We've completed the survey and wetland flagging for phase one and phase two combined. And just, just to say that phase one and phase two, even though they're totally independent, but they kind of have to work together in terms of flow and, you know, gravity flow of sewers from different areas. Survey and wetland flagging was completed by March twenty twenty. We've completed the preliminary design, meaning the size of the force main, the depth, the, the size of the gravity sewer, the components, the manholes, the air release valves and the blow-off manholes on a force main. This was fairly completed here and I think we're, today we're in the permitting and the final design phase of this project. We anticipate if everything goes well, bidding would be November and December of twenty twenty. And then again, this is a good time to bid to, because the, the prices are very competitive for the, for the time of year. And construction would begin in January twenty twenty-one. And even though the schedule says completion of June twenty twenty-two, the, the bulk of the work, the pipeline and all the sewer system components will be completed by the end of twenty twenty-one. And the, the trenches will sit through a full freeze thaw cycle for the winter of twenty twenty, early twenty twenty-two, and the final paving would, would be completed by June twenty twenty-two. A little bit on the project background, before we got involved, we got involved almost a year ago, but November twenty fifteen, a, the town completed a sewer priority plan. The previous consultant took it from December eighteen, twenty eighteen through like last year, May one, twenty nineteen, through, you know, committees, a bunch of committee meetings, a board of selectmen meeting and finance committee meetings. And town meeting approved an article for eight hundred thousand dollars to design the phase one and phase two of the project. We submitted, as a consultant, we submitted along with a couple others and we came in at four hundred and ninety-one thousand for design services that would include phase one and phase two of the project. We came before the board and attended board of selectmen updates on December seventeen, twenty nineteen. We held a presentation for the stakeholders, the business owners at the Cedar Hill in February twenty twenty. And we went before the board of selectmen twice and before the finance committee once in March of twenty twenty. Historically, the, the, between nineteen eleven and the year two thousand, usually the town bears about a third of the sewer cost and the additional funds would come in from federal grants. Before two thousand, I was involved in, with various communities where a bunch of money came in and there was a lot of it from the federal government. After two thousand, really wasn't so much, kind of dried up a little bit. Enable and Act amendments, what really did in the year two thousand allowed the town meetings to determine the funding of participation by the town, but in practice, the town had required a butters to be a hundred percent of the cost. So little or no federal state grant money has been available since the year really two thousand. And as a result, between nineteen eleven, two thousand and the year two thousand, about seventy percent Stoughton received municipal sewer, but since two thousand, it was very little expansion to speak of. The funding mechanisms, so we looked at various, the, the most common ones, really the Mass Works Grants. We'll talk about some, the Mass Works Grants, usually they're open in May and the, the application is due in August. Again, they're very competitive, but they need support. They're basically based on job creation. I think the town has some letter of support from the business owners in the industrial park to, to support this project. The Housing Choice Community Grant, this is back to the Mass Works, I guess, the, the most recent ones that you see here on the slide, North Andover, two point three million, Ton, two point four, Citu with two point two. And then actually, the most recent one was in Andover, Daskin Road was unprecedented, six point five million dollars. Never heard of such, that's that much money before, but it did happen and this just happened last year. The Housing Choice Community Grant, a lot of local communities got it. Eastern here, my hometown got two hundred and fifty thousand last year for the sewer expansion on, in the five corners up there, one oh six and, and. So that money is available, but again, it's about two hundred, three hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand on average. The most recent one, the EDA Cares Assistance, we looked into it, the chairman and Marcus did forward the information a couple of weeks ago. We looked into it, it looks very, very promising. It averages about one point four million dollars for the works portion of it, and I think this is where Stoughton falls under. Again, it's definitely worth the, the effort to go through it. The only thing is the town would have to match fifty percent of the construction cost. And then of course, the, the state revolving funds, those are low interest funds through the Clean Water, Clean Water Act, SRF program, they could be, be as low as two percent. Some of the principal could be forgiven based on the median household income for the town Stoughton. All these applications, we have the deadlines and when these applications are due, the intent is to, once we get a green light to proceed, we're going to fill in those application and submit them to the appropriate agencies. At this point, I will turn it over to Mark to talk about the veteran policies, the connection policies, and I'll be more than happy to take any technical questions at the end of this presentation.
Thank you, Ziad. You've seen the slide plenty times before. It's a sewer connection policy in summarized fashion. As you know, it breaks into the policy into residential properties and commercial industrial properties. And the difference between those two properties is the amount of time the property is required to connect to the sewer once it's installed in the street in front of them. On the policy number one, it's ten years for the residential, three years for the commercial industrial, and then if there's, there's incentives for each one of them to, the selectmen can waive the connection fees, the INI fees, the permit fees, if they connect within three years for the residential properties and within one year for the commercial industrial properties. That's an incentive to get everybody hooked on a little earlier, earlier than what the policy mandates. We also mentioned, obviously, that scenario of the property had septic system installed within five years of that pipe, sewer pipe being installed, that we would add five years to the connection policy for the residential side. So they would get fifteen, fifteen years to connect. We do have some exception overrides, things like obviously if you have a field cesspool septic system, you're required to connect, transfer a property ownership unless you've had the replacement septic system. An increase in flow to your existing house, so for example, you had a three-bedroom house, your septic system was designed for three bedrooms, but you're putting a fourth or a fifth bedroom on, that would result in a failure of your septic system. So you would have to tie in and then also new construction. Trying to give the selectmen a couple of options here, not, not a large difference between these two options, other than on policy number two, it's the number of years to connect for a commercial industrial property. So it went from three years down to one year and there is no waiver of the permit fees and the connection, the INI fees, things of that nature. Everything else is exactly the same. So the, the connection policy is one policy the selectmen need to make a decision on and then the other one is the betterment policy, which we have here in front of you. This is a summarized chart that explains what the betterment policy is. Essentially, the betterment policy determines how the project is funded. For simple projects in the past, obviously, if you've had a subdivision road with ten lots on it, all the houses are about the same size. Typically, you take the cost, you divide it by ten and everybody gets that betterment, whatever that, whatever the cost of the project was. Since this project is a mixed-use project, you know, that, that creates a different scenario where we have to kind of standardize everything based on whatever a unit is. And a unit is a, you know, the flow associated with a single-family dwelling based on a standard reference, which is Title V. That would be three hundred thirty gallons per day. So it takes, so for example, a single-family house would be one unit, a three-bedroom single-family house. A duplex would be two units, a three-family house would be three units. When you get to the residential undeveloped properties, base, base the calculation on how many frontage lots you have in the area. So if you could get two lots based on your frontage and the area requirements and zoning, you would get two units. For a non-residential property, we base it on water usage. So if Title V require your water usage for the designing of septic system to be, say for example, you know, three thousand gallons per day and you brought, you divided that by the three hundred thirty gallons per day, single unit, you would have ten units. So you pay ten units. It's ten times the cost as a single-family building. For a non-residential building lot, which is, that's undeveloped, there's not many of those over there, but there's a, there's a cup, one or two, I think. It's the same, same methodology, but it requires your engineering department to do a little bit of work and determine what, what's the most probable building that could go on that lot. So for example, we would look at our wetland information, our property line information, our utility information, and we, we could come up with, say, a thousand square foot office building could fit on the lot and we would, we would say, okay, well, whatever that water usage is based on Title V, we would come up with your, your betterment. This was requested at the last meeting and somehow I didn't make the presentation last meeting, so we apologize for that, but it's here now. It's the, the betterments summary. And we, we were talking about twenty-five percent betterments. We were talking about, you know, one-third betterment, so we added that in here. In, in fifty percent betterments we put in. We broke it in with grants and without grants, because there's a lot of different grants out there. So we're not calling any specific one grant, but we're seeing one point five million dollars in grants, just to give you a perspective of what that does for the betterment versus a project with, with grants. If you look at it, basically a single-family house, if you, if you issued a twenty-five percent betterment, it would be around fourteen thousand dollars. With, with, with one point five million dollars in grants, it's around eleven thousand dollars. So it's about a three thousand dollar difference when you actually get a decent amount of grants. You can go right down the list and kind of see the ranges. There's obviously a lot of properties in this area, so there's a lot, a large range of betterments. And these are just estimated at the time. What really happens in, in, in reality is that you, you go out for bid, you construct a project and once you get your last invoice and you know the total, the total price of the project, then you issue the betterment. Now, we have a town meeting article for seven point five million dollars. We have an estimated cost of around seven point three now. When we go out the bid, it could possibly come in lower because we do have about twenty percent in contingencies built into that, that bid. So it, it could be five or six million dollars. We, we don't know until we go off the bid. It's always about the climate. The interest rate on these betterments is five percent. That's state law. If we did get a, one of those SRF loans for two percent, we could, we, the note at the bottom says we could charge, we could actually do a betterment two percent above what the town gets for the borrowing rate. So we could actually issue betterments at a four percent interest rate. So that would be a little less than, you know, the fourteen thousand you see without The betterment policy also has some, a scenario built into it, which is very common for privileged fees. Case one would be, you know, the back lot situation where, you know, everybody just paid their betterments along the main road where the sewer went in and you have the back lot that you landlocked, but Mr. Developer comes in and, you know, buys one of the front properties and is able to unlock that land, put ten, fifteen, twenty lots, whatever it is out, out back there and didn't have to get betterment. The privilege fee takes that into account and if that happens, we charge him the betterment the same way as everybody else did. So it's calculated based on the number of units. And number two would be that undeveloped, the undeveloped piece of property, which is a unique situation. If, if the engineering department, you know, underestimated the, the size of the building that could go on the lot and say, for example, that developer came in and put the two thousand square foot office building and we said you could do a thousand, it would be the difference of what the original betterment fee would be issued to that person at that time. That's the summary of the two, two policies in front of you tonight. We're willing to answer any questions that the public may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Any questions from the board before I open it up to the public?
So just, just for clarification, there's at least two things that we need to look at tonight. One is which option we want to choose for the sewer connection policy? And number two, what percentage of betterments we are looking to assess for the project? Is that correct, Mark?
Correct.
And, and the, when we say a percentage to assess, we're assuming that the remaining portion is going to be assessed to the town's general fund? Was that, Mark?
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that before we go any further.
Or, or grants, Mike.
Hopefully, knock on wood. Thank you, Mark.
I have a couple of questions about the, this, the sewer connection policies, one and two. Looks like the, the main difference, the only difference I can spot is between the two is the commercial. I know you've gone over this in the past, the commercial element, whether or not they have to tie in within three years or within one year. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Along the, along that area, how many businesses are, would you make, would be, would be called small businesses?
Back to the slide that summarizes this. All right, so there's, there are twenty-eight commercial industrial properties in the whole area and I'm just going to count them right on the map here of how many industrial properties there are. One, two, three, four, five. I believe there's twelve or thirteen industrials, so the larger businesses. There's some moderate-sized ones in the middle of that triangle there, some of those like office buildings.
Yeah.
And then you got some smaller ones on Park Street.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, so let me open it up to the public, the first person, and this is a great way to do it. I commend everyone who's done it. If you're on the online Google meets and you'd like to ask a question, please put it into the, please put it into the text or the chat and, and I'll call on you. One question that's come through is can the presentation be shared with attendees? The answer is yes, it, it has been and the update will be posted on the town website for anybody who wants to download it. Someone more familiar with Google Meet, is there a way to share it through Google Meet now or is that something that someone would have to download on the?
I'm, I'm copying the link to that we have for the PDF right now.
Cool.
I'll put that in the comments in just one second.
Thanks. All right, so Mr. Scardino, you were the first one to offer a question. All right, let's, Joe, we'll get you next. I'll watch and see if you.
I'll set.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll set. My question is with respect to the sewer connection regulations, the three pages that are at the end of the policy. My first issue is with one point two point two, which is transfer of ownership. The way I read one point two point two, if I've engaged in some estate planning and my estate planning attorney tells me that the best way for me is to avoid probate and so I convey my trust, my house to a trust, that conveyance would accelerate the connection period to thirty days after the transfer. And if I have a septic system that was put in six years ago and I convey it to a trust, the way I read one point two point two is within thirty days of the receipt of the connection notice, I would have to install, I would have to hook up. If I did not transfer my house to a trust, I would have at least four more years to, to hook up under the ten-year rule. So that, that, that operates as a hardship and that penalty in one point five would kick in. The other type of transfer that I see happening under one point two point two is where a parent conveys the house to a child for a dollar or for love and affection. That's a transfer which would accelerate, again, the one point two point two transfer and shorten the, the connection policy, assuming the same facts of a six-year reconstruction of the septic system. So in both cases, I would not have a full ten years and the three, two hundred dollar a day penalty would kick in for what would be considered fairly normal estate planning. So the problem as I see here is, is in the, the fact that the word transfer is not defined in here. So theoretically, any transfer of ownership under one point two point two accelerates the connection policy for somebody like that. And my, my last point, and you can deal with these in any form, shape or manner, is if I have a, a garage, a room over my garage and my septic system is set up for three bathrooms and I put a toilet in my man cave over the garage, I will again accelerate if, if that's, if I'm within the five years. So the problem I see here is that the, the regulations work as an automatic penalty for people in those situations.
Joe, can I ask you a question? Would you find it not, would you find it not a penalty if the transfer terms were transfer terms, uh, were parallel to Medicaid eligibility lookback? So that a, a, an intra-family transfer that was within the time that would not be accountable asset under Medicaid saved it from the penalty, but if it's a transfer that is not saved, then the transfer counts under this. That way, we make our regulations parallel for estate planning purposes to the Medicaid regulations, and it's something objective that most people are aware of.
I would, uh, I would go back to my original suggestion, Mr. Chairman, of, of adding a definition to transfer of ownership to exclude a transfer for full and fair value? Because, um, I think that anything short of that is frankly, um, a penalty on what would be considered normal estate planning.
Well, then you wind up having, having values played around with in, in a deed, and we can't, we can't.
Well, uh, I think that most of these activities are going to be for little or no consideration. They're pretty obvious. If you're saying that I'm going to take a, uh, a, an $800,000 home and convey it for 4,000, and that wouldn't be subject to the, uh, 1.2.2, I wouldn't, I, I would disagree with that. I'm talking about for, for basically nominal consideration. Or, um, where the, um, where the subject of the transfer was for pure estate planning purposes, like trying to avoid probate by putting your house in a trust. I, I think that frankly, the better way to do it is to define, is to put a definition of transfer of ownership, because all of these are not uncommon. This isn't the, the, um, uh, tail wagging the dog.
Gotcha. Thanks. Anything, anything else? We can move on, and I, I appreciate those comments. Uh, anyone else from the board for Mr. Scardino before we move on? Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anzavino, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first, did you see the last note that just popped up that said you broadcast failed? And it was showing programming.
Oh, okay.
I just saw it pop up right before you called on it.
I had to re-sign on John in order to avoid that.
No, it said the TV broadcast.
I, well, I just re-signed on and got on.
Anyway.
On SMAC, thank you.
I just thought, yeah, I just wanted to mention that, but, um, and the other thing was that the presentation that showed on the screen is not the one that was attached to the agenda. So just so you know, it was a little different. Couple of slides I think we missed. Anyways, on to my questions. They mentioned a- as far as, uh, an undeveloped lot and trying to determine what your betterment would be. So if, if they go through their formula and decide that this, uh, you know, the, the betterment would be based on, uh, two units going on their property, would that prevent that property from ever being, uh, say, going before a board and getting, getting adjusted to put more than what was originally, uh, scheduled for a betterment? So if, go ahead.
So your, your question is, if we issued two betterments and they come in with something more than that?
No, you had said if you had an undeveloped property, uh, to determine the betterment, you would look at the frontage and so forth or whatever, and you would determine, uh, that piece of particular property came in and you could put two units on it. So the betterment would be based on two units. Now, down the line, if somebody comes in to develop that property, and they come in and what have you, they, from, through whatever means, they get it approved to put, uh, three lots on that property. Would that betterment then change to be for three, three pieces of property? Or would the property then be locked in to only have those two?
Well, we would be basing it on what's allowed by zoning. So if they came in somehow and got a variance of some sort, um, that allowed them to get more lots than what our zoning says, no, this policy doesn't account for that.
Well, I mean, that's the question, you know, that, that is the question, uh.
But what it doesn't.
Would it, would they end, end up getting, uh, another charge for a betterment for a third property?
Uh, I, I think that's a, that's a great, that's where the privilege fee could kick in, if we word it correctly. Um, because that, that would be a classic. So that, we're saying you can get two lots, but they come in and get 10 somehow, right?
Well, I would hope not that much, but.
Um, if they have a good engineer, they might be able to, right? Um, so if that came in, that would fall under the privilege fee, uh, category. Um, because it's, it's, it's going to be more lots than what we assume would be on the property.
All right, so it would be covered through that?
Yep.
All right.
Similar to that backlot situation.
Yeah, okay. And that, that, that's fine. And the only, uh, just a quick one, um, during the presentation, it was meant, it, it was mentioned that the, uh, town meeting had approved 800,000 for the design and so forth. And did I hear correctly that when they put in the bid and they got the bid, it was 419?
It was, uh, 491.
Oh, 491?
491.
All right. So I assume if that was done under the, you know, and stayed in line with the bid, that means there's money left from that appropriation that we, the town should be seeing come back?
Yeah, so, so we had one, engineering services are exempt from the, you know, procurement laws. So, but we went kind of above and beyond, and we said, you know, to, to get this price down and try to save the town as much money as possible, we competitively put quotes out um, to two or three companies. An environmental partners came in the lowest. So the, the 800,000 was actually calculated by the previous engineering firm as an. Um, and then obviously, they didn't win it. So environmental partners did, and we've actually got a good track record with environmental partners. They're working on all our water treatment plants, and our water pipes, and our water system. So they're doing a good job.
Yeah, no, that's great news. Great news for the town.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there any, anybody else who wants to be heard on this?
Yes.
Uh, can you give us your name and address?
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street.
How are you tonight?
I'm fine, thank you.
Do you have the floor?
I have a que- Uh, my first question is, when this is passed at, when and if this is passed at town meeting, doesn't, uh, a lien automatically go on each property?
I don't know the answer to that question, to be honest with you.
In the past, that's what's happened. Um, it's passed at town meeting, there's a lien put on the property, and that lien doesn't come off until the project's completed and it's paid for by the person who owns that property, which could mean that people's property could be leamed for a number of years.
I mean, I, like I said, I don't know the exact answer to that, but I don't see how you could lien somebody's property until the betterment was actually issued for the property, but that's more of a, a legal question.
That's right. Uh, the other thing is that, um, other listeners should know that, um, this proposed, um, connection policy is mandatory. So everyone pays the betterment, whether or not in the past, everyone had to pay the betterment, whether or not they chose to hook up. Here, you'll pay the betterment, um, unless you have special circumstances, you'll be required to hook up, pay the INI unless you meet your requirements. Uh, but that doesn't stop it. Um, you'll be getting a quarterly bill for sewer as long as you own the property. And I don't know if residential owners know that our current sewer rates are basically double water. So if your quarterly water bill is, say, $100, and most people I know tell me it's more than that, then your quarterly bill for water and sewer would be $300. And I think you need, the board members need to recognize that, and some of you are on the water subcommittee know that many people are having difficulty paying just their water bill. And so the combination of water and sewer for some people will be a hardship. But I do not live in phase one. My property's in phase two. But I think it's only fair that the, the residential customers know these things. I know we want the, uh, business folks to get sewer. We know that it, or you're telling us that that's going to mean, um, a bigger tax base, and that should help all of us. But it's going to be a, a heavy burden on the folks in phase one, the residents in phase one, so that those businesses, uh, can prosper. And I'm worried that the people that live in the residence may not prosper between the betterment and the connection and the INI, and then the sewer bill that they'll be getting quarterly, at least from what I know of the folks that live along that route. And many of them have been there. As you have pointed out, their systems are 25, 50 years old. Well, that's how long they've been there. So that these folks tend to be, um, not folks that can come up with a lot of extra money quickly. I just want everyone, especially the people that own the homes along this road, to know that this is going to be expensive for them. And maybe they are ready to sell their property because they've been there for so long, so this is a boon for them. But I think for many of them, it's going to be a real burden. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Paul, Paul Demuse, do I see you wanting to speak?
Yes.
How are you?
Good, and yourself?
Good, thanks.
Um, I have more of a comment and a question. Last week, you asked me about the old, the old way of doing it with the 30, 70 split, uh, 30% by the town, 70% by the residents and businesses. On the surface, that sounded okay, but I really didn't have any details to, to go along with that. So I don't know if that's going to be part of the, um, equation when the betterment policy is, is determined. But more information on that would have to be available, I think, if that was the direction it'd end up going outside of what's been presented with all these different betterment percentages.
Thanks. Any, anything else? I appreciate that.
Yeah, the SMAC broadcast still isn't working.
Yeah, I've, I've been trying to find out what's going on with that.
Which is unfortunate because we've been moving this meeting so that the public can see it in hours for the, for, you know, this hearing.
I started recording it, uh, just in the event that nobody from SMAC is. I'm not sure if they are.
Yeah, they are. SMAC is the, is the, is recording it or supposed to be, but, uh, we'll see what we've got. Um, uh, anything else? Anything else, Paul?
No, that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. McCrisky?
Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering on, you know, this is a public hearing. If the public can't see it, you know, and be part of it, I mean, are, are we going to be able to, you know, and I, I'm not ready to vote on it tonight anyway. Uh, but, um, I, I just have a problem. If, you know, this was a continuation of a public hearing, and, um, you know, now the residents that have, uh, that have logged on to their TVs can't see it. I don't know if that's something that SMAC can look into and let us know if that's going to be a, a fix where we can continue and, and allow, uh, anybody else to, you know, to, to call in. But, um, I don't know. I, I, just a little uneasy with this.
Well, the, the meeting is, is, um, was to be broadcast over, uh, SMAC TV, also available livestream. Uh, so if anyone has, and not everybody has cable, uh, but if everybody, anybody has a, a smartphone, uh, with internet access, they can go to stotontv.org, and it should be live streaming over, over, uh, SMAC. I don't know why it's not. I, I heard it was starting. Uh, we were all, we were all there when it started. Uh, I don't know why it stopped.
Well, this just goes back to what I've brought up several times in the past, is that not everybody has a smartphone, not everybody has internet access, and they don't go on to LinkedIn and all those. So it, uh, they go to the cable TV.
Well, not, no. And not everybody has cable, so we, we can only, we can only do the best we can, and it's, and it is going to be imperfect. Um, I wish, you know, I, I wish we could control the gremlins, but that's, that's where we are.
Well, would, would this feat, would this fit the process? I mean, is this going to be a, is this going to be a legal hearing?
This complies with the governor's mandate. This could, this complies. It is being recorded. It will be rebroadcast. Um, um, it's being made available over the internet now. And it's scheduled to be made available over, uh, livestream. In addition, um, the minutes or transcript can be posted. So we satisfy the open meeting requirements.
Maybe we could extend.
That's, that's a different matter. That's a different matter.
Maybe we can extend the, uh, the, the written comments to be sent to the chair. You know, so that if somebody does watch it at home, you know, that they wanted to make a comment, they could email it to you just so that they can have their voice heard.
If that's what the board wants to do, let's, let's continue with the hearing, and then, and then we can deal with those.
And if, if citizens have questions too, I know throughout the week that there were residents that reached out uh, at town hall or to, uh, the town manager and, and her staff. She's directed them to, to Mark Tisdale in Engineering. And Mark's, Mark's taken the time to meet with, uh, residents one-on-one and answer questions. And I'm sure the engineering department would be happy to do that going forward as well. I mean, me personally, this, this is the second night of a public hearing. I mean, I, I understand, Joe, I understand your concerns about the, the feed, you know, potentially shutting off on, on cable TV, but, uh, you know, at the same time, there's, there's plenty of citizens who have called into the meeting tonight. And, uh, you know, I think we should take the opportunity to, to listen to them, uh, right now if, if we want to move this along.
No, I agree. I agree. I was just thinking if we could just extend the comment period a few days, you know, for, you know, just for the, the chairman to be able to take those comments and do just that. You know, have somebody talk with the engineering department to answer any questions just so that we don't keep them out in the cold if they didn't have it. That's all. I agree.
And you know what? It looks like there was a, another comment on the chat, uh, from Alean Claudio. And so I'm just going to read it real quickly just so nobody misses it. It's, uh, she's, she wasn't sure if the presentation can be updated so that the sewer rates could be added to a slide on the presentation as well as adding the betterment costs to the PDF version. And I think what she's mentioning is that the PDF version uploaded last week at our May 12th meeting. I, I, I don't think it had those costs broken down, or it wasn't the same, uh, slides as, uh, Mark had presented tonight.
Yeah, the one we received in our agenda packet is different from what Mark presented.
But yeah, absolutely, uh, to, to, to Alean Claudio. We can get that updated and get that posted to our website.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question about the timing of this. I understand that the finance committee was waiting on the board to make a decision on the connection policy and betterment policy in order to, um, determine what they were going to do. Do we have a sense of what, what's gone on with that? I know that the finance committee's been having public hearings and meetings right along. Are they still waiting on the board to make a decision?
Yes, and I've been asked if we could wrap this up so that, uh, their goal is to conclude for the town meeting book tomorrow. Um, that doesn't mean we have to conclude our public hearing. We could take a preliminary vote, um, on what we've heard and continue the public hearing. This is, um, and the other thing I'd add is, these are, these are policies. This is direction. This does not set the rate on what people will pay. This does not set the amount that people will pay. This is the first cut at a formula to get to that number. I, I pick up in particular the potential for a 50% grant for this project under the CARES Act. And I, and I, for one, that would affect, uh, how I would look at the rates to it, particularly on the residential ratepayers. But, um, uh, that's to answer your question, Ms. Howe. I understand they would like us to send them something so they can work with it. Is Mr. Tabor on? I know, I, I got a message that he might, that Mr. Tabor, Tabor, I'm sorry, Tabor Keely might be present for this. Um, he spoke at town meeting. Uh, I wonder if he might add some perspective, if he's got any, uh, on, uh, on this project. Now, where we are in the economy and, and, uh, what our need is for infrastructure, and also how the rates would work.
Sure. My name is Tabor Keely. I'm a commercial real estate agent with, uh, Donahue Associates. Uh, the park there, uh, Camp Nellie Drive is, uh, sort of the center of our market. You know, that, that park in particular, and as I mentioned during my presentation at town meeting, uh, has suffered, uh, because of the lack of sewer. Name, some of the neighboring properties, uh, Some of the neighboring properties, uh, or parks that compete against this have the benefit of sewer, and some of them are in Stoughton. Uh, and I think at the time, we went through the various, uh, ratios of, uh, rent received for straight warehouse versus manufacturing, uh, some of the higher intensity uses that might include, I know some mention of hotels, I'm not so sure how practical that would be, but certainly open to the public, uh, gyms, uh, entertainment facilities, um, you know, if we ever get back to a normal life where there's a higher concentration of people indoors, uh, sewer is required, and that's the only way you're going to get tenants to pay higher rents, and the only way the properties will be worth more money. And obviously, the tax dollars received by the town are in relation to the value of the property. And the value of the property there is probably at the lowest that it could be, uh, with buildings on it. I mean, they're all buildings that are in relatively good condition, but that's about the best you're going to get without, uh, adding some intensity to the use, uh, higher population of people in the buildings.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, could I add one thing, please?
Sure.
I, I did look at the two PowerPoints. Uh, the only slide that changed was the addition of the Betterment summary. So the design of the sewer connection policy and the Betterment policy remain the same. It was just putting a slide in calculating the Betterments. Not sure why they didn't get through, but that was the way change.
Great. Thank you. Mr. McCrisky, is that you?
Yes, it is. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to ask if there, I, I know there's definitely one businessman, uh, that I see was on the call that, uh, has been down in the Campinelli area, uh, better than 20 years, I would say probably closer to 30 years. Uh, and I would ask if there's anybody from that business community that would like to be heard, because I would like to hear from them as well. You know, and I, I don't know how many. I know of one that may not want to speak, but that's fine. But if anybody would like to be heard, I would really like to hear from them.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? I, I'm on the phone. I could not connect to the, um, the connection to, to see or to be heard. Um, I was listening to Cynthia.
Can you tell us, can you tell us who you are?
Yes. My name is Pat Stanton, 882 Park Street. It is the old Tolman School. And I listened to Cynthia Walsh, and she, she is absolutely right. I live on Social Security. Do you think that I can afford $11,000 Betterment? I'm going to have to sell my house. And if this project goes through, it's going to lower the value of my house, because some poor soul that buys it is going to have to hook up, because banks aren't giving mortgages to buildings that can be hooked up and aren't. And I'm already paying on a Betterment to put the septic system in, which I did maybe about four years ago. And my neighbor is, his septic system is two years old. So, um, we're getting, we're getting, um, part my friend's shit on, because you've got people, business people up in Campinelli that want this. I don't know who they're talking to in the town to get it to get pushed so much, but to be honest with you, we, we residents don't want the septic, uh, the sewer, we don't need it, and we can't afford it. And I don't know how it's going through.
Anything from, any questions from the board, if you'll take them? All right, I'm not hearing any, any questions from the board. Thank you very much.
No.
Go ahead, are you done? I didn't think, no, no, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, I, I, I've been to all the meetings, and the last one I went to, everybody was up and on. We're, we're not wealthy people. If we were, we wouldn't be living here on Park Street. And, and a lot of us are senior citizens. This is totally, totally unfair, just to pat the back on some businesses in Campinelli Park. You know, if they want it and need it so badly, let them pay for it.
Do you know?
That's to me.
I'm, I'm trying to place where you are. Are you in Phase One or Phase Two?
I'm in Phase One.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCrisky?
I just want to convey to Mrs. Stanton is that, um, this isn't being pat on the back or, or done, you know, there's, there's been a lot of interest. I still am not solid on how we're going to pay for this. I have mentioned as well that I think some of this should be, uh, really have been shared by the rest of the community, because we all benefit from the, the tax dollars that come in. So I, I'm not, you know, I can tell you right now that I started out opposed to this, and I've been looking at the numbers. And, uh, again, I'm not rock solid on any of the numbers, because I believe we could soften them. Uh, but again, I, I voiced my concerns earlier, uh, to the Town Manager as well, with how I feel about people with, uh, sewer syst-, uh, septic systems that were just replaced, uh, maybe kicking that down a little bit more, because, you know, you won't even make your money back if you had a septic system put in. So I'm, that's what I'm looking at as well. Uh, I, I just, I, I felt that I needed to say that, because, uh, this isn't something that's being rammed down because a couple of business people want it. In fact, uh, we still haven't had a commitment, in my opinion, we haven't had enough commitment out of the businesses on Campinelli, uh, to make this viable. And I want to make sure that, you know, if this does pass, that everybody pays their fair share, and it's not just put on a bunch of, you know, a smaller group of people.
Well, you know, what, as a person living on Social Security, my fair share isn't fair.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I, I'm saying, I don't even know if the numbers that were presented would be the final numbers. So, I mean, if, it, you know, it may not be, and, and if they are, I'm not sure how I feel about that. That's just me personally. I can't speak for anybody else on the board.
Well, I appreciate that very much, that you're honest enough to say that, because it, it is going to be a burden.
Well, honestly, I think I, I could probably safely speak, and I shouldn't even say this, but I will, uh, that I think I could safely speak for my colleagues on the board, that we're, the goal of this project is not to put an unfair burden on anybody. You know, that there, there is a need, there is something that can benefit the entire community, and if it can be done with as little impact as possible, then we need to look at that. But right now, we're still in the stages of finding out what that point is.
And I do have one question.
I just want, let me just interrupt, and I just want everyone on the line, I'm sorry, uh, the, uh, live broadcast over SMAC is back up, and so is the, uh, livestream on the, on, on the internet site. I'm sorry, go ahead. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Um, I'm on the phone a lot, as is my neighbor. We're going to have to pay frontage inside when the sewer system comes up from, from Turnpike Street up to Park Street?
No, that's exactly, that's exactly one of the problems with, um, other Betterment assessments that the proposal in front of us has attempted to fix. It's not based on frontage. The proposal we have is based on, um, expected flow. If you're a large.
Okay.
Commercial building, you're going to put more into the system than a three-bedroom house. And so the Betterment assessment that's been presented is based on flow, and that recognizes that the large user, which is commercial and industrial, uh, as you mentioned earlier, uh, should pay the largest share of this infrastructure, since one of the driving considerations is, uh, supporting them and, and their development. And that, by the way, helps all of us, because it increases the tax base, so residential tax rates don't have to go up. One of the things I think all of us are trying to do is look at properties, you know, for everybody, and, and you mentioned yours, so let's, let's use yours as an example.
Okay.
What this, what we've been looking at in our operating budget for the past few years, this year, and, you know, was difficult, last year was difficult, the year before that was difficult, is how we maintain a level of services in public safety, in education, in social services, all across the board, without crippling the residential taxpayer. Uh, the only way to do that is to build our non-residential tax base. As a community, this is just my opinion, we haven't done that as well as we could or would or should have. Had we done this sewer when it was cheaper, and when some other funds were available, it would have been paid off, and that additional tax revenue that's forecast for this by Mr. Keely and everybody else we've spoken to on this, would ease your residential tax on your house, so that you still get the fire, and the police, and the ambulance, and the school system, and the senior services that you've become used to or entitled to get. Um, and that's the position we're in in looking at this project. How do we increase our tax revenue, improve the town, and not do so on the backs of the residential taxpayer? Um, because we hear all this, we all think, take it seriously, and nobody wants to hurt anybody. There is one bank that's announced that they will be active with the people in that area to assist with financing on favorable terms. I, I believe there'll be some other banks stepping forward, so that cash flow issue, Betterments, and other things can be managed for people. And I think the town will work. What we know from the work that Mr. Tezdel did between our first presentation and last week, was that he found a grant that we're potentially eligible for that looks pretty good, to contribute 50% of the cost. That's huge. That's a great opportunity. Um, and what we have to weigh is all of these considerations and find a way to not hurt anybody, and, and, and help everybody at the same time.
Well, I, I, what I foresee is, as soon, as soon as we know this is going through, you're going to see a lot of houses to sale on this street. And, and that's too bad, because most of us have been here for years. And, and I just, I, I just feel very badly, because I was brought up in this town, I went to Stoughton School, um, my, my kids did, my grandkids did, and now I feel like I'm being forced out. And, and that's how I feel, and I wanted that noted, and anything you can do to keep it, keep the price tag down would be greatly appreciated.
And, and I think to a person, everybody working on this, that's our commitment. Absolutely. If we could get it free, we would do it.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bye-bye.
Want to be heard. Thank you. Good night. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Can you hear me?
Um, cool, yeah. Could you tell me your name?
Uh, Peter Murphy.
Peter Murphy, how are you? Can you give us your address, please?
Good. Peter Murphy, 60 Peters Drive. One of my concerns, good, one of my, a couple of concerns I have is, this has been voted down several times, as the PT and presented. One of the issues is Turnpike Street. As you change the usage down that area, Turnpike Street becomes more of a, of a highway rather than a roadway. And as you start to develop, and one of the developers mentioned, turning possible hotels, more people being down that area, you're going to have higher traffic on Turnpike Street. Has any thought been given as far the, as far as further development to correct the situation on Turnpike Street for traffic?
Well, Mr. Tezdel can answer this in more detail, but when the Board of Selectmen presented the article to fund design, we also presented an, an article to fund traffic improvements. As part of this work, uh, we've been in communication with the Planning Board, because the Planning Board has been actively working on a Route 27 corridor plan, so that kind of zoning can all, my desire, and I think everybody is, have all this come together, so the quality of life in that area, uh, doesn't get adversely affected, and we can, in addition to improving the tax base, manage the ta-, the, uh, traffic issues that we've got. But Mr. Tezdel, can you explain what the traffic aspect of, of that, that article on funding was, and how it relates to the commercial developments sought by the sewage system?
Yes, I can. Um, that article was for $375,000 that Town Meeting approved last year for, um, you know, designing improvements to the Park Street, Turnpike Street intersection in the surrounding areas, which includes, you know, 10th Street in the, uh, Park, in Turnpike up to 10th Street. Um, most likely, you know, I can say we're sure that either that intersection will be signalized, you know, for sure, to let vehicles come and go easier than they can now, especially tractor trailers. Uh, 10th Street, we've heard loud and clear that that needs a sidewalk and pedestrian access needs to be looked at, looked at in the whole area. So that will be a critical part of the design. So all that will be rolled into the, uh, design. Right now, we've surveyed the area, um, collected all the traffic counts, and preliminary plans are being prepared as we speak, so.
Well, my concern comes in is Turnpike Street. And what happens is, on Turnpike Street, there's a speed limit on that of 30 miles per hour. And I'm sure that if you go through the police reports, you'll see numerous cars being ticketed for doing excess of 35, 40, 50 miles an hour on that street. There's also a truck restriction coming out of that industrial park, and you continually see trucks coming out of there. So if you start to allow for further development down that area, you're going to have trucks, you're going to have cars. And on Turnpike Street, there are no sidewalks coming from Central Street all the way down to Park Street. You also have children that are waiting for school buses that go from one side of Turnpike Street to the other side of Turnpike Street to catch the bus, with no place to safely stand waiting for a bus. So as you further develop this side of the town, I see the lack of development a concern for the safety and the ease of, uh, of the, the control of traffic on Turnpike Street.
Well, if I could answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Um, one, one of the big issues with that, and I think you, you hit it right on, um, I'm not good with the sayings, but you nailed it. Um, with the traffic coming north on Park Street, uh, whipping around that corner to Turnpike Street, uh, there's nothing to slow cars down. It's a big radius in the road, cars just fly, they're, they're already going 30 or 40 after they take the turn. So that's dangerous. Having a signalized intersection will obviously control that and slow vehicles down tremendously. Um, regarding the, um, the traffic, we're, we're, we're talking about an industrial park in a commercial corridor already. So there's no guarantees right now, but we're trying to get less trucks, right? We're trying to get better uses in the park, offices, so there may be more cars, there, there may be some more cars, but there'll be less larger trucks, for example. We'll have less warehouse and storage areas that have a ton of trucks going, large, dangerous, wide trucks flying down the road. It'll have maybe more smaller vehicles traveling down the road. So, you know, time will tell, but I don't foresee it getting, getting that out of hand, the traffic, because it's already an industrial, uh, commercial corridor.
Well, again, I, I, I go back to, you asked the police chief, you go back to records as far as the speed on Turnpike Street, the cars are exceeding the speed limit, and it's, the trucks are the trucks, but there's probably been more issues with cars possibly hitting people that are jogging down the street, there's no sidewalks.
So, Peter, I don't, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I, I'd like to stay focused on the sewer Betterment and Connection Policy. I understand how these are related. Um, uh, is there anything else you want to, you want, because I, I take what you're, what you're describing seriously, that's a dangerous road. It's, you, you get on it, at, at one end, and you can just, you know, take a nap as long your steering wheel is locked in your hands, put your foot on the accelerator, and, you know, six minutes later, show up, if you're on one end, show up in, in, uh, near the Brockton Line, and you're fine. And, I mean, that's what happens. It's a Speedway. We've got to deal with it.
Right, but I, I think what happened, the reason I'm bringing it up is, you just had a commercial developer saying to change the complexity of that park, and one of the things he mentioned was some type of entertainment, some type of hotel. When you put a sewer line down there, that now allows for those developments to happen in that industrial park, not to mention all the.
And that's why we have asked the planner and the Planning Board, and the Economic Development Officer, and the Engineering Department to get in and, 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 and plan out how all of this area gets developed while, while the sewer is done, i- i- if it's approved, so that we haven't got everything done piecemeal, which is why, again, we asked Town Meeting to approve the traffic study and design, so that we could begin to address what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and it may not be perfect, but we, 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 we can only do the best we can do. Anybody else on the line? All right. The television connection has been fixed, the live streaming has been fixed. Just in case people were watching and blacked out, I want to repeat the telephone connection if no one is, if people would like to speak. You can call in at 520-815-1238. I'll repeat the telephone number, 520-815-1238, and you'll be asked for a PIN. The PIN number is 136457540, and then the pound sign. I'll repeat, the PIN number is 136457540, and then the pound sign, and that will connect you in on the telephone as so many people are on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi, Peter Brown, Chavon Road. How are you?
Good, Peter. How are you?
I'm doing all right, thank you. I, I did get kicked off, so I kind of had a break in being the coverage, but I, I'd like to ask a question of the policymakers, and I think in this case, it's not the board at this point, it's the, um, the engineers and whatnot. Is that, is that correct? Am I right on that?
Well, ask, ask your question, and whoever can answer it will answer it, I think, because that's.
Very. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to refer to the policy, um, the sewer procedure regulate, I mean, the sewer connection, um, section 1.5. And I'd like to ask, or actually, I'll, I'll read it quickly. It just says penalties and any person failing to connect within the time limit stated shall be subject to a fine of not more than $200 as determined by the sewer commissioners, which is the Board of Selectmen, I get. Each day or a portion thereof shall constitute a separate offense. My question is, why do the policymakers believe it's necessary to include penalties for not hooking up? And is this only going to be applied to the Park Street project?
Let me answer the second part first. This is a policy for the Park Street project only. So unless the board does something different, um, all I have on the agenda is, is for the Park Street connection policy, and that's what this document is. As for the rest of the question, I'll defer to the drafter.
Hi, Peter. It's Mark Tezdel. How are you?
Hey, Mark. How you doing? Good, thank you.
Um, we, we looked at other sewer connection policies around when we're generating these policies, and they all had very similar penalties in it, and they usually go by each day after. Some of them had $100, some of them had $300, uh, things of that nature. So we had Town Council review it, uh, make sure it was in line with other communities. And this is what, what they came up with. The board can certainly take a look at this and, and adjust it accordingly if that's, if that's their wish.
Well, I appreciate that, Mark. My, my concern is that when, whenever I see penalties added to policies, I, my radar goes up immediately. And I'm, again, if this is a project that is being supported and good for the community, I don't see why we'd want to have penalties associated with it. It's actually almost somewhat like a double edged sword in some cases. So I appreciate your time. I just wanted to throw that out there and maybe, uh, take a, maybe the board can take a look at and maybe not have something, or at least maybe look at reducing that to the $200, up to $200 days to me is, 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 is impacted. I want to thank you, appreciate your time, and wish you all well.
Thank you, Peter. Stay well. Anyone else want to be heard on this? All right. Is there any desire by members of the board to continue the public hearing, to close the public hearing, to make a preliminary decision on the, on the rates? What, where would you like to go?
At this point?
On the policies?
Yeah. With regard to the public hearing, Ted, now meetings, and then we did have a short technical issue. I think we're, I, I'm prepared to close the public hearing, so I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. On the motion to close the public hearing, Mr. McCrisky.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I was on mute. Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I vote yes, so I declare the public hearing closed. So now, uh, it would be appropriate if someone wishes to make a motion to begin if we want deliberations, uh, on either the sewer or betterment assessment policies.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, I, I think we should start with the sewer connection policy. And just one quick comment, too, even though the public hearing is closed for tonight, I, I hope any citizens that are watching or listening, if they have further questions or comments, please get them into the board. Our emails are on the town website. I, I just noticed that only a couple of our emails are listed. I think the chairman and Christine's are listed on the website, but if you can't get through to them, you know, feel free to try the town manager's email as well. And if you have questions, you know, please, please try calling or emailing. Uh, and then with regards to the sewer connection policy, um, I kind of like, or, or I'm leaning towards the connection policy, uh, uh, number two. Uh, and that's, you know, that's just me. It, it's, it's a little, little bit more stringent on the commercial and industrial and multifamily properties. So that's just how I'm leaning.
Do you want to, do you want to make that a mo, a motion to adopt that for discussion or?
Yeah, sure. So I'll, I'll move to adopt, um, the draft sewer connection policy, number two, uh, for the Park Street sewer project.
Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion purposes. I was actually leaning toward, uh, connection policy one. If you look at slide following two policies, it gives a count of, um, total revenue generation if, um, we go with the one year instead of three year. And the only difference over 20 years, uh, it's 20 million, 20.2 million versus 21 million. And then the return on investment is reached only one year earlier. Considering this, this might end up being somewhat of a hardship on those businesses and the residential home. I don't see, I don't see much more of a difference between the year and then the three year policy even has an incentive in the form of, um, the permit fee and the INI fee if, if they connect within a year. So it incentivizes the one year connection, but doesn't require it until three years, which, um, as I said in the, the summary document, even if they all don't take that one year incentive, um, the three year difference in the revenue is, I mean, it's dollars, not like a huge substantial amount.
I'm, uh, for, for what it's worth, I, I, I'm coming down the same place. You know, my main concern is that I, I feel like three years is, is very aggressive, right? For, for, uh, for a company, uh, they're, they're going to be plenty of people who want to tie in right away. Uh, but there might be some people who, uh, are struggling, uh, to tie in, some small businesses. And getting an extra year or two, uh, I, I don't think is unreasonable. There is a benefit to, to getting in within one year. And, um, just in the interest of, of doing the least amount of harm, I think that that would be, I lean toward, uh, the policy number one, uh, for those reasons. And, uh, you know, of the small businesses and many of them down there are restaurants, if I'm not mistaken, and, uh, considering how hard they've been hit in the last two months, I, I think giving them a little bit more breathing room, uh, over the next couple of years to sort of win back some of that, that, uh, those losses, uh, is, is responsible and appropriate. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm willing to pull, uh, my motion if, if Joe or Bob are leaning towards connection policy one also. And, and I mean, there is the hardship factor that could be exercised as well if, if it is a small business or a restaurant that needs help. But, uh, I'm happy to pull my motion if, uh, Bob or Joe, uh, you know, whatever you guys are thinking as well.
I was, um, Mr. Sullivan, I, I was thinking policy two, uh, until recently. Um, but I don't think with what the business community is facing, we need to put that much of a challenge. I was even thinking policy two as, as, as recently as a, as a month ago is making more sense to me because of the, of the quicker payback and connection. But with the, as Ms. Howe put, with the incentives in policy one and the need to be flexible with the business community, I would, I would now favor policy, uh, policy one over policy two, just because of the potential hardship that might have. That's where I come out.
I'll, I'll throw my two cents in as well. And I guess I've been up the opposite end that, um, I haven't really been in favor of either one of them. I think they both have their strong points and weak points, and was thinking that maybe we could come up with something as a policy. I don't think we should be, you know, given the fact that it's one and two, that we pick one or two. And maybe we could have, you know, three that's made up of one and two. I, I think they both have some good parts. And, you know, I, myself, I would be more, uh, more willing to sit down, even if we, you know, just to clarify my thoughts, to talk with the engineer and to see how I feel about it. And maybe it's something we can have a policy that, uh, that brings some of it, because it's obvious that we all have mixed feelings on one and two. So if we can come up with something that, you know, possibly could include a little from both of them, it, it may work.
The only difference, Joe, between one and two is that, um, requirements for the commercial industrial properties within a year.
Yeah, but then again, as, as well as, you know, the possibility of sharing more of the burden throughout the community.
Right.
And, um, you know, I'm just thinking something that we can address that when we're talking about it, because it would lower the cost then even on the, on the flow.
But it spreads the cost, but it spreads the cost.
It does. It does. But then again, to your point, you've made the point, and so have I, Mr. Chairman, is that we're all going to benefit from the tax revenue that comes in. And if we can make it easier on the residents that are there, uh, we heard from Mr. Stanton. I mean, there's, there's probably people we haven't heard from, uh, but if we can make it a little easier on them and it's not going to be a bigger burden, I mean, I look at my own sewer rate, and if we had, you know, a small sewer rate, we, we should be making an investment on the money that's going to be coming in. That's why I'm, I'm just not sure where I, where I stand on it. And I, I will not be voting on a policy tonight, uh, because I'd really like to look at this and based on some of the conversations, you know, throw around and see if there's anything we can do to mix, uh, some ideas up and come up with, uh.
And I, I, I do recall that we asked for a legal opinion on, uh, spreading betterment assessments, um, outside of the betterment zone. Uh, I don't know, uh, Mr. Tezdel, you may have been tied in with that. I just don't recall what the ruling was. Do, do, is that something you have at your fingertips?
Um, just, I was just researching my email. There was an email I asked KP about this. He's, Joe, you brought it up at the last meeting, I believe. Um, so from, uh, from, from, um, KP, they said, um, a betterment can only be assessed to those who have benefited by the public work beyond the benefit to the community. Chapter 80 S1 puts it that betterments may be assessed wherever a limited and determinate area receives benefit or advantage other than the general advantage to the community from a public improvement made by or in accordance with the formal vote or order of the Board of Officers of the Commonwealth or a county, city, or town. So it said, I'll, I'll forward the email to you, but essentially it, it says you can't assess betterments to the entire town for a specific project.
Well, it wouldn't be a, it doesn't have to be a betterment. I mean, it could be an adjustment of the sewer rates.
Oh, I, I follow you. Yep.
You know, I mean, we don't have to have betterments. I know we can't do betterments for somebody that doesn't have it, but if we adjust the sewer rates and lower the amount of the betterments, you know, and, and we could come up with a figure that it's, it's reasonable, because again, we, you know, the entire community is going to benefit from that tax, and we're going to be paying for the schools, we're going to be paying for police and fire. It's not like we're putting in a nest egg and, you know, keeping it as our own little private fund, so.
So, Joe, what would you propose?
Well, I mean, I, I think we should come up with some options and, and look at what that would be if, and have the engineering department work on what the rates would be if we decided to take an additional third of that cost and put that on the sewer rate. You know, if I know what that amount would be, see if it makes it more, it's easier on the residents up there and, uh, and it's not going to burden people, you know, on the sewer rate. I mean, let's just, I think we should look at the options. It's worth looking at. It may, it may not work. I don't know, but it's definitely worth looking at. I think we should be looking at all the options and not just picking, you know, the black and white print of one or two.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think, um, there's a couple of things we're discussing here. And in relation to the connection policy, that's kind of a timing issue in my mind of when we would compel individuals to connect to the sewer, whereas the betterment, as Joe is saying, is, is more about the cost and the burden on the resident or the commercial property. So I think Mr. Sullivan's motion was related to the connection policy, and that to me is the timing, which, you know, these, this policy was put together after a lot of insight and input from the engineering department. I think examining the betterments further makes sense, but at this time, I, I feel comfortable with either of these policies in terms of the timing and voting on when the connection would take place. How that cost breaks out is a little more complicated as we've been discussing, um, for what that's worth.
I may be off by one or two, but, um, this is the 10th or 11th meeting that we've had as a board, um, on the connection and betterment policies, and they've been getting more formal and structured since last fall as it's been coming forward. The motion is for a connection policy. Mr. Sullivan, you've heard from, uh, people. Do you want to take any action on your motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll pull my motion, and I'll make a substitute motion, uh, to approve the sewer connection policy number one for the Park Street sewer project.
Second.
All right. On motion made and seconded for connection policy one, any discussion on that?
And, and Joe, a lot of the points that you were hitting, I think we're going to get into with our next discussion on the betterment rates and shifting some of the burden to the general fund and whatnot. But for now, just on the connection policy, I think we have enough information now that we can set, you know, like, like Selectman Howe said, when residents and when businesses will, will connect. So I'm, I'm ready to vote on that tonight.
Any more discussion?
I will just, um, the question that was brought up about the connection policy was related to, um, transfer and ownership, um, by Mr. Scardino. I, I just want to confirm that, um, the board is okay with that, or, or, you know, that this policy be able to handle appropriately. Um, I think the hardship language is pretty broad, and folks can come before the board as, as they do when they have an issue with their bill. Um, and so I think on a case by case basis, if those instances were to crop up, this, the Board of Selectmen would be able to address it. And, um, you know, if someone needed additional time, or if it was an extenuating circumstance where they're, you know, putting a property into a, a trust or something, um, then I think those, those case by case issues that don't quite fit into the here would, could be addressed.
Well, one way to address, and I, I think it's a legitimate point, that if it's solely at a transfer for estate planning purposes, um, I know that transfers, I, I think until recently have adversely affected eligibility for some of the senior tax programs because a transfer to an estate planning trust, I think, was interpreted as disqualifying people from those benefits. And, um, it might not hurt, um, just throw this out, so that if we amended 1.2.2 to recite upon the transfer of ownership, um, other than for estate planning purposes, or indicate that, uh, estate planning purposes, uh, in the hardship exception would be considered. What we do not want to have occur, I think, is a series of estate planning documents that move real ownership away and away and away, and they're actually real transfers, but they're all done within a trust, so there's no sale, uh, to defeat these kinds of assessments. And so if we make that part of the hardship, uh, language, then it gets reviewed as probably would work better on a case by case basis rather than in a general, in a general provision. I think a bright line that tracks existing bright lines that people are familiar with would be a workable solution and also putting into this, uh, or, or resident, or estate planning purposes. Uh, or, uh, or resident, or estate planning purposes. That do not alter beneficial ownership of the property would achieve the goal, which is we don't transfer. Uh, and walk away with, uh, a, a real, uh, s- sale, which I, I, I think we should prevent against. I, I don't know. That'd be a way to address it and be clear because in two or three years, um. Uh, another board picking this up might not remember, and if it's not chiseled into the. Into the policy document, um, somebody with a legitimate estate planning. A tool that we do not intend when we adopt this policy to trigger a big expense. Uh, it comes up, uh, and, and doesn't meet the hardship test. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
So can I offer an amendment that section one point, two point two of transfer of ownership be amended to recite, uh. Where is hardship in that? I'm looking for it.
One point, two point five or one point five.
That's, but this is connection. I don't see hardship in the connection. I, I know I read it, but I don't see it.
One point four.
So if we amend, let me change, if we amend section one point four to include in the second sentence. Special hardships may include extraordinary financial hardships or circumstances unique to the property. Making a connection to the sewer impossible or extraordinarily burdensome. Or, and then I would add after the, instead of the period, or estate planning purposes, uh, estate planning. Purposes that do not affect beneficial ownership of the property. Or current beneficial ownership of the property would mean the current owners and occupiers. So that the next, that the people who take after the current owners. Wouldn't be grandfathered into that. That would be considered a sale. What they think we're all concerned about is the current people. Who've been there for a long time to not adversely affect them in their estate planning.
That's fair.
Well, that's my motion. Don't ask me to repeat it.
So this, Mr. Sullivan have to accept that change? Cause he had the initial motion?
If he takes it as a friendly amendment.
Yeah, that's fine, Bob. I agree with that.
Okay.
I seconded motion, so I'll, I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion on the connection policy? All right, then the hearing done, I'll call for a vote. Mr. McCrisky?
No.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I vote yes. So that's four in favor, one opposed. Is there any, a motion on the betterment policy?
So, so my own, my own line of thinking on this is I'm leaning towards the fifty percent. And that's, that's where I'm leaning. I'm curious what other board members are, are thinking.
Mr. Tezdel, can you pull up the slide on the breakdown, the percentages? And Mr. Sullivan should respond to you. I'm, I'm leaning toward the lowest percent betterment we can, we can manage. Again, kind of working off of that twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, connection cost. So if you have. We're looking at an eleven to fourteen thousand dollar connection with the betterment, um, plus. The eleven, ninety-eight hundred to eleven thousand, that I think was through the connection, quickly approaching that.
Can you see that, Christine?
Yes, thank you, Mark.
And in this slide, just so I understand, um, correctly, the twenty-five percent is the amount paid by, eh, eh, in your example, uh. Ms. Howe, uh, that would be the amount paid by the, uh, the property owner? Or by the town?
The property owner, I believe.
Property owner, okay, okay. That's, that's what I thought, but when we were, in the conversation, we seemed like we're, we, we were going the other way. Uh, with, um, seventy, thirty. Uh, okay, appreciate that.
Could I mention one thing?
Yes.
One, uh, one option for the board too. You can pick what the equivalent unit would be, the cost for that. You can pick five, ten, fifteen thousand. It doesn't have to be an exact percentage, and then that would be the equivalent unit. So for example, uh, a ten thousand dollar, um, assessment for one unit would be less than twenty-five percent. Uh, just to give you an idea of what you can do. You can, you can, you can, you can. Issue what the betterment would be for residential, single family dwelling. Is that's, that's what the equivalent, um, unit is based on. So right now it's fourteen thousand for twenty-five percent betterment. You can pick a number of say ten thousand or five thousand and we can back calc it and, and you can call it whatever percentage you want, but. You can pick the number too. So whatever ten thousand equates to, it maybe it's twenty percent or nineteen percent, whatever the number is. If you like a nice hard number, if you feel like a, a ten thousand dollar number or a twenty thousand dollar number is better, we can just back calc it. And go from there.
So can I repeat what I think you said and you can tell me where I get it wrong? We, we, we could say we would set betterment assessment for flow at less than. At the single fam, residential family, uh, flow or less at ten thousand dollars. And then you recalculate these numbers.
You, you would want to set that, that, um, I just wanted to get the exact language here. You want to set the, the, the single equivalent unit. Which is a single family dwelling at whatever number you want, and then we can back out the num, the numbers to, to whatever percentage it's supposed to be.
So instead of saying the percent, we, the betterment amount for the single family and then. You would do the math to figure what it would be for multifamily, commercial, and so on and so forth. And then that would, would appear as the variable number. Versus the ten being the standard and then the betterment total being the variable number.
Before I speak out of line, uh, Craig, you, you agree with that? We'll just go, go ahead. You can just calculate the ten thousand for the equivalent unit. Uh, ZI, chip in if you want.
So, yeah. I, I agree with that. I think you can, you can do that. It's just going to adjust the, the percentage of the betterment. And you have to define that as the, uh, the single family unit, uh. So you said that, and then everything else follows. Uh, because the equivalent unit for commercial will, will have to be calculated based on that number.
Exactly. He said it better than I did.
It's all algebra. You just changed the F.
Exactly, yes, yes.
And, uh, I had a question mark. Um, I'm not sure if you know this or if other members of the board know. Upon the transfer of property. Does the remainder on the betterment then get transferred to the new owner? So if you had seven thousand left to pay off on your betterment. That would then get transferred to seven thousand to the other person?
I believe it goes with the property, um, but I'm not going to tell you I'm a hundred percent sure on that, Christine.
I'm also thinking, you know, if people are paying off the betterment for ten years and then they move, um. They necessarily get, I mean, I guess the property value would increase because you're on the sewer line now, um. Or it's seen as a benefit, so what you pay into it, you're getting the benefit of the betterment, the amount of time you're paying for it, but.
Right, right. Every year that goes by, your, your septic system has one year left, less of life too.
And these are twenty years?
Twenty years, yep.
Doesn't the betterment, uh, doesn't the betterment have to get repaid at closing whenever the, the property sells?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. Like I said, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one.
I, I think like Cynthia Walsh said earlier, it's leaned against your house, the betterment. So if you go to sell it and you haven't paid off your betterment yet, then I'm pretty sure that that has to get. Involved in the closing cost of the property.
Yeah, we, we, we'll get an answer from town council. The answer I recall getting in the past was that that runs with the property. And the assessment is actually an annual payment due. Uh, so if you sold your property in the eighth year, then whoever bought it in year nine picks up the, uh, the annual payments. But we'll get that clarified. You don't, if you sell it, the, the betterment does not have to be paid off, unlike a real estate tax every year. Which does because under the betterment, nothing is yet due, uh, if it's spread out over the twenty years.
So my line of thinking with the fifty percent betterment assessment is you have the town paying for half the cost of the project through the general fund. Half the cost is assessed to the people that are directly benefiting from the project. And with the acknowledgement that fifty percent of the town's paying from the general fund, the town is facing some type of. Townwide betterment as well from the project. So that's why I was supportive of, of fifty percent, but I'm curious what other members are thinking.
Well, you know, uh. When I, when I consider just facing as a homeowner. The price tag of, of, you know, roughly, you know, twenty-two and half thousand dollars, um. That, that would be hard for, for a lot of people to digest. And so even though, uh, I definitely appreciate. You know, the reasoning there and I agree with, with it generally. Uh, that's, that's a tough, that's, that's a tougher, you know, sandwich to eat there for, for somebody on a fixed income. I don't, honestly, I don't know at this point where, where I kind of fall on this, um. I would like to get as close to zero as possible. Sorry, I don't have some better reasoning here.
Yeah, my, my reasoning all along has been i- if people build septic systems or if people have cesspools that aren't going to pass type of five. When they, or when they go to sell their home, you know, how much is it going to cost for them to put a septic system in? Instead, we're, we're kind of saying you're going to connect the sewer instead. So I'm trying to make those two costs as equivalent as possible. Because they're going to have to bear the burden of that no matter what, if they have a sealed septic or a cesspool. And so this is just kind of incentivizing or expediting that process and I want to make those costs as equivalent as, as we can. And I, that's why I'm roughly using what the septic installation at my house cost was twenty-five thousand. I don't know what the average is around the area. I don't know what, um, these are going to be mounded systems most likely. I don't, you know, each, each one is different. But if we can have that rough average in mind when deciding how much the betterment would be plus the connection cost. I wanted to get it as close to that, um, that number as possible.
So are you assuming a connection cost is going to be like ten thousand for the residential?
Between ninety-eight hundred and eleven thousand at the last meeting was.
Yeah, so, so, um, if you want me to, I can.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark. If, if you want to just briefly touch upon that, what you think the all-in costs are for like a septic and then how it compares to, uh. To some of these percentages.
Like Christine said, it's a very case, uh, site by site situation. But a lot of these properties are close to the road, so there's not a, a far run of sewer pipe you need to connect from your house to the stub. So I would say ballpark price of five to ten thousand for a connection, unless you're three hundred feet off the road. Obviously, that doesn't apply to you. But I'm not sure if that happens a lot. But let's use five to ten for that sewer connection. And then, um, an average septic system in that area is going to range probably twenty-five thousand to forty thousand. Uh, depending on the site, if it's got a pump and it's a tight site and you need to put your tanning walls on it, it'll be the higher number. If it's pretty straightforward, probably the twenty-five thousand dollar number. Um, so if you wanted to use an average septic cost, let's, let's just call it thirty thousand, I would say is a reasonable number to, to use for that area.
So that was, uh, thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
It hit ballpark, thirty thousand, yep.
Okay, so, uh, with, uh, roughly eleven thousand dollar tie-in, uh, that would, that would leave us with about. Uh, sorry, nineteen, nineteen thousand, uh, which puts us, you know, somewhere closer to thirty-three percent than. Either fifty or twenty-five percent. Yeah. Okay, um, I think, I think the reasoning's fair. If you, if you needed, if you are going to need to put, if, if a resident there is going to have to put a new. Uh, separate tank in, at roughly the same time, uh, making the cost roughly the same, I think is, is, uh. Makes sense to me. Uh, if we move to thirty-three percent, that would actually, uh. It would, it would actually be, uh, slightly less expensive to tie, to tie in and. Uh, eat the betterment, uh, than it is to, to have to deal with the, the entire cost of, of tying in, so. Perhaps, uh, in, in the interest of, of, uh, of finding some compromise here and some, and some finality. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, the, uh, thirty-three, three percent betterment, uh, policy as presented by Mark Tezdel.
Second.
All right, on the motion made and seconded on the thirty-three percent betterment policy, any additional discussion?
I mean, it's, it's not. No real hard science, I guess, that we can point to because these are ultimately estimates and we don't know. Exactly what's going to happen with each and every property. Um, as, you know, Ms. Walsh had said, they're also going to be paying for. The sewer, this cost of sewer now, um. Their, their, you know, quarterly bills, so. I don't know if that comes into play in terms of thinking about on top of that increase in what you're paying for your quarterly bill, you also have this lean from the betterment. Or this, this payment for the betterment as well with that, so I'm kind of leaning toward the twenty-five percent, uh, still. I, I want to. I see how the, the math works out for the thirty-three percent, but I, I'm just cautious, um. I'd be overburdening people all at once with all these changes, um. My, my feelings on the thirty-three percent. Especially without the grants being necessarily guaranteed. I think if the grant money comes in, that changes things because then that brings that thirty-three percent down. About what the twenty-five percent without grants is, um, so far. Confident we're going to get the grant, um, equal to the twenty-five percent anyways, so I'm. That's, that's what I'm leaning toward.
Fair enough. And, you know, I, I, I do not feel I made the motion, but I was still, I, I, I can't, I can't. Uh, lie. I'm still filled with, with, um, uncertainty, uh, about the whole thing. Uh, I apologize to the board, but I'm going to withdraw my motion. And in its place, uh, I'm going to make a motion to accept the twenty-five percent betterment policy as presented by. Engineer Mark Tezdel.
I'll second that.
All right, on the motion for twenty-five percent betterment policy as recommended by Mr. Tezdel. Um, any further discussion?
I will support it. But I don't like it. I don't like the fact that it's going to fall. To a heavier burden to the rest of the town to pay for sewage for such a small percentage of our town. And I'm reluctant to support it because. Well. Getting the, the sewer down there is better than not getting the sewer at all for the, you know, the health of the entire. Area down there for the, the business park. And so I, I'll, I'll support the twenty-five percent, but extremely reluctantly.
Joe, do you have anything?
No, sir.
I, um, I'll, I'll vote in favor of this. I, I probably share, um. Mike's position, I, I, I think that, um. That the, the drive to get this area stewered is what is the policy we have to push for. Uh, I'm concerned, um, about two things here. One is. That as a town, we have not put sewer places we could have, should have, would have. This is an example. Because we have been, uh, as a town pressed by the residents in those areas. That they don't want to pay the expense and so we've denied ourselves opportunity. And on the other hand, um, uh, the rest of the system. In one way or another winds up supporting the payment of replacement. Uh, sewer, septic for systems that will fail because the cost. Uh, sewer septic for systems that will fail because the cost for the homeowner here is. It does not approximate, uh, uh, the cost of the. If you will, the Title V changes the homeowner would have to make. Um, I come down, the sewer system needs a priority. And I hope if the town takes it, this invites the town to take a broader look at how we put sewer in. And that we look at this as an equity issue around town. That is, other, other areas of town that need sewer. Should benefit from the same kind of policy because it, it works for the whole town.
I share the same concerns, but more, but on the other end, I'm, I'm nervous about the precedent that we're establishing for paying. Three quarters of the cost for this, this area of town, knowing full well that there's other areas of town that need sewer too. You know, when, when we did that sewer prioritization study in fifteen or sixteen, this was the number one priority, but. You know, right behind it, the second priority was South Washington. So, I mean, I'm, I'm nervous about the precedent that's being set here. For the seventy-five percent. So that's another reason why I'll reluctantly support it, but it's. It's going to mean that five, ten years from now, when we're looking at other areas of the town, we've set a precedent now.
Well, phase two, we've set a precedent for this Park Street sewer. And now, um. And, I mean, that's going to be a challenge. We should, you know, everybody should think about that. It might be that when we get around to looking at phase two, the kind of grant money we think we can get for this one is unavailable. And, um, as needy as that sewer is, is for the town and the, in the area. It fails because town meeting will not absorb three quarters of the cost, either in the sewer department or, uh, with the tax rate.
You know, uh, Mr. Chairman and, and other members of the board, you know, one other consideration too is that this is still going to have to go to town meeting. You know, I, I can't, I can't imagine that meeting members are going to be too happy. Thinking about paying for seventy-five percent of the cost of, of, of this project. So that's another consider, you know, consideration why I was pushing for a higher percentage, just, you know, to get this through town meeting as well. I think that's going to make it, you know, much harder to pass that body in the next few weeks. So that's, that's just another consideration that, that I would. Like you guys to think about with supporting this twenty-five percent.
It might also go the other way though, where they don't want to burden, burden the residents down there. Who, from the ones we've heard from tonight are, they're concerned about being overburdened and. There's a lot of other concerns related to that commercial development too, so. Yeah, it's, it's not, there's no easy answer. It's kind of a tricky situation.
All right, any other discussion? If none, we can put this to a vote. On the betterment policy to accept the recommendations of staff at a twenty-five percent rate. Mr. McCrisky?
No.
Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I vote yes. If it's all right with the rest of the board, I would like to encourage, uh, that, that these are policies that are. Open to further review before the rates are set. And, um, I, I'll just say that if town meeting. Uh, has an issue with twenty-five and, and town meeting thinks thirty-three would, would make a difference. We should be open to that because on the whole, uh, getting this, uh, project done. Is very important to the town. I, that's just me. But I would be, I would be very eager to hear more from town meeting, um, on this policy. For the whole, whole betterment.
I agree. I agree with that.
All right. So, uh, that closes out item one. Um, item two is citizen requests. Uh, anyone have a request to make? Let's, uh, please bear in mind it should be something not already discussed or something not on the agenda for this evening. I'm not seeing any microphones turning green on the. There's a Jim on who just turned green. I don't know if you'd like to speak. There's no last name.
Mr. Chairman, it is Jim Kenny. If you can hear me, let me know.
I can hear you. How are you, Jim?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Um, so under citizens' requests, uh, in the new normal we're living in here, um, and working remotely from home. Um, I, I, I wanted to bring to the attention of the board members that. There has been significant heavy hauler industrial, uh, truck travel, uh, and, and I, I live at eight fifteen Turnpike Street, by the way. Um, heavy duty hauler truck travel, um. Uh, on Turnpike Street, coming from T L Edwards, uh, heading south towards Central. Uh, turning left to go out to Route twenty-four. Um, using, you know. Video conferencing, et cetera, has become quite difficult as the noise is deafening. I don't know why it has been so excessive, um, but it is. Um, in addition to that, we have, uh, up on Maple Street, uh, Amazon is parking their prime. Uh, tractor trailer trucks up there and they're also commuting up Turnpike Street. This all in addition to, you know, the normal tractor trailer travel going up to Ikea. Uh, Ikea Way, um, and this is going, starting at eight o'clock in the morning. Um, so my request is to whomever, uh, that it be addressed. Um, this has been an ongoing problem. Um, outside my home, um, the speed limits are forty miles an hour. And thirty-five miles an hour, two separate lanes. Why that is, I don't know. One side is forty, one side is thirty-five. We've had in the past the police looking at it. Nothing has been done, but I can tell you, I've had a number of my neighbors approach me to discuss the same problem. Um, I don't know why there's so much excessive, uh, travel, uh, going down a T L Edwards, uh, and coming back up. And Turnpike Street has become a horrible cut through. Uh, a Mr. Murphy spoke. Uh, about the other end of Turnpike Street and the need for sidewalks, et cetera. Well, when the Ikea development went in. The plan was, and it happened to put tur- uh, sidewalks in, and that would slow, uh, travel. It was rubbish. I told the attorney representing Ikea at the time that that in fact would be the case. Sidewalks do not slow traffic. The traffic increased. And I informed all the zoning board and the supportive selectmen at the time that. Truck and vehicle travel would not slow. It would only get worse. And that in fact happened. So. What I'm asking tonight, if there was someone can sit down and work to address. The heavy duty travel going up to Turnpike Street to Central as a cut through when it should be heading out. The other way to Route twenty-four, uh, would be most appreciated.
Well, uh, let me start by asking the manager if she would convene a meeting of. Staff for this and come back with recommendations. I think this easily includes DPW, the engineer and the police. Uh, we need, we do need a better traffic management plan in that area. Um, and, um. My question is, how long do you think Dr. Grimm would take to, bearing in mind the extraordinary, uh, environment we're in? How, how, how long do you think it would take to come back to the board with, uh. Some direction we, we might be able to take on this between. Action the board can take as, uh, uh, street commissioners and then traffic management that's available by. Working with the, uh, businesses on voluntary route selection and things like that. How?
Um, i- if I can have about two weeks maybe to try to coordinate everybody's schedules. I know that's a long time for, for the gentleman waiting, um. But I, I just, I don't want to make a promise that I can't keep him right now with, with all that's going on and, and budget. An election coming up, it's going to be busy. So, um, but within two weeks, I should be able to have something. If sooner, I certainly will let you know.
So not that you'd have recommendations, but that you'd have a, a roadmap to get there if we put it on for. Update on the June second meeting. Does that fit a timeline that you think you could meet?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kenny, is that, is, can we do more than that?
Uh, that, that is absolutely fine. That's all, that's all I'm asking for. Um, because it, it does need to be, uh, addressed and I, I know there's a lot on everybody's plate. Um, but it, I have to tell you, it is, it is deafening here and, uh. It's, it's not getting better and it needs to be addressed. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, John Inzovino asked to be recognized. Mr. Inzovino?
Thank you, Bob. Um, hey, just a, a quick question as far as the election that's coming up and, because it's coming up fairly fast. And with the urging of people to, if they want to stay away from the polls. There are two different, there are two different applications you can fill out. And that's an early voting and an absentee ballot voting. Um, does it matter which one? Because I, I read the COVID thing, uh, on, on the Secretary of State's. Site. It seems like that is an acceptable reason for, um. An absentee ballot. Maybe the early ballot needs no reasons, but does it matter which one or could? Maybe you could ask about that and get that information out there?
Um, I, is, uh, I don't know. Is this something Dr. Grimm or, uh, Mrs. Carrara can answer if she's on?
I, I'm actually on. Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. What, um, I find that if you use the early voting application. Which is fine. It's just that you're going to receive an absentee ballot in the mail and it's going to say absentee ballot. So I don't want any confusion because normally the state does not allow us to have early voting for local elections. So if you want to use the early voting, uh, ballot application, that's fine, but I'm, we're just telling everyone to use absentee voting because, uh, ballot because the COVID. Um, is a reason why you can absentee vote. So up on our website today, we, we did put up the absentee ballot application. Uh, in that you can go on the general, general, uh, webpage of the town of Stoughton or you can go directly to, um, my webpage, which is the, uh, town clerk's office. And they're right there. You just download it, fill it out, mail it in to us. And the ballots have been ordered, so I'm expecting them here, uh. Tuesday or Wednesday next week. So we'll be, we'll be getting them out ASAP.
Could you walk us through the steps? I'm sorry, John.
Well, I knew the, I knew she had the absentee ballot, um, the link to it because I, I, that's where I got it off of the website. And by the way, I saw the video, um, for the voting. That's out there on the YouTube as well.
It is.
And I, I, and you did a good job with it. But I'll ask you a question with that while you're there. You know, you're going to get the bag with all your stuff, the mask, the gloves, the pen. What are you going to do with all that when you're done?
Well, we will have trash receptacles if the people want to, um. Discard them or if they want to take them, they can take it as a souvenir to. We think, we think the pens will be souvenirs. Yes, we think the pens will be souvenirs twenty years from now. That's your COVID, your COVID.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't hear it in the video. I actually went back and watched it again and I, I was just wondering if you were going to have receptacles here or just, if you wanted people to take them.
We are. And, and I will be honest with you. A lot of people do take the pens even before COVID. So, you know, they can take them and, uh, I had a great, a great voter that helped me, uh, in my video, Dr. Dr. Grimm.
I wanted to say, I noticed you had an out of state of giving a fake address to get the ballot.
Fake name. I felt that was really bad.
I hate to, I hate to ask everybody to get back to business, but let's get back to business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Carrara, as long as you're here, would you walk through just the steps, uh, in order to obtain, uh. The absentee ballot? First of all, it's the same ballot we'll receive no matter what, how we request, right?
Correct.
So what are the steps? I, I fill out the form, I get it to you, then what happens?
Then what happens is, uh, myself or, uh, a member of my staff will enter it into the VRIS system, which is the, uh, state election system. We'll put that in there. Uh, once we get the ballots, we print out labels. We already have our envelopes, uh, in, inner envelopes and outer envelopes ready to go. When we get the ballots in, we will, um. Fold them up, put them in the envelope, send them off to you. You'll have an inside envelope to put your ballot in, along with an outer envelope to mail it back to us in. And as soon as we get it, we enter it into the system and we have to put them in precinct order. By address and by alphabetical, so that on the day of the election, we will be taking these ballots. By police in the morning to the precincts and then they'll, the wardens and clerks will start their procedure of checking them in. Making sure that, um, they have an absentee ballot for everyone on the list. And then they process them through the, uh, AccuVote machine that we have. And then at the end of the night, they print out the tape as usual and all those ballots that were absentees will be included in that count.
Now, if I get the ballot, can I open the envelope, do the vote, stick it in the, uh, in the inside envelope? Then put it in the mail back envelope, put it on my mailbox for the mailman to come take away? Or is there anything else I need to do?
You'll have to put postage on it. Um, but we will, um, yep, they'll, they'll bring it in. Also.
Do I have to notarize? Do I have to get it notarized? Do it go anywhere else? Can I stay in my house the whole time?
Yes. Other than walking to your, uh, mailbox and putting up the flag so the postman can get it.
Thank you.
And then, uh, just so you know, we're not open to the public, um, as you all know, but you are more than welcome to bring those envelopes. To the town hall into the vestibule and place it in our town clerk drop-off bin. You put it there and we will be checking it probably like every, um, about every hour. If not earlier, when, once we start doing that. The only thing is, you have to remember that if you drop it off in that. Bin, it is in the vestibule and it is not like a secured location. Any people, the public can come in and out. So it's better that you mail it. And if you're going to drop it off, please let us know so that we can. Know, we can go out to the bin, know that you put it in there and take it right out. But I truly would prefer if people mail them back in for a more secure. Safety issue so that we know that the, we go, we get it back. So we don't have people calling saying, I dropped it off in the bin and did you get it?
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
Just, I, I had a couple of questions, uh, for Ms. Carrara as, as well. Thank you very much for all the work you're doing and the, and the videos really was very helpful and great.
Thank you.
I appreciate you doing, doing that. Uh, so, uh, the, the very first step of getting the, the absentee ballot though. Uh, I don't own a printer. I know some other people who don't own printers. How do we get one?
Sure, you can write us a, a note, say, you know, dear town clerk, I would like to have an absentee ballot for the local election. Uh, please mail it to, you put your name and your address and you have to sign it. And you can mail that off to us here. And we attach, once we receive that, we attach it to a form that we're required to have. For the state in case like we ever got audited or anything like that. We attach it, we enter it into the computer, same process. Once we get the ballots in, we will mail it out to you.
And the application, uh, can I scan that and email it to you or does it have to be mailed?
You can scan it and email it, but it, it is required to have a signature. So I can take electronic sig- uh, electronic signature. If that's, um, if that's what you prefer. If not, just sign it and mail it in to me.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, um, uh, after having watched the video, I, I, you know that I've been, uh, uh, a nervous Nelly, but after watching the video. Uh, given how nervous you, you know, I've been, I can say that I actually feel a lot more comfortable. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, it was nerve-wracking doing that video because now, you know, not everything was set up the way. A normal election was, but I figured that people. a normal election was, but I figured that people who go out to vote each election, they, they'll, they'll know what it, what they have to do.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right. Mark Zemanian wanted to be recognized. Mrs. Zemanian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up to what Mr. Jim Kenny said. I know the town manager said she'd be looking into the issue with the traffic over there. We're having the same issue here on Pleasant Street. There's quite a few more trucks, and the speed of those trucks is getting quicker and quicker. They're, they're increasing their speed. I have two small children that ride their bikes out here. One mistake would be a very sad thing, so could the town manager look into that, this area as well? It's clearly coming from the industrial area there. I thought TL Edwards was supposed to be going through the Avon Industrial Park, not through our town, but I could be wrong on that. Maybe that's, and you can look at, Robin?
Sure.
I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing. I apologize.
Too late. Nope.
So, Robin, I think it was at the last meeting, I had asked you if they were going to be collecting recyclables up on Gave Street. Have you been able to get an answer on that?
No, it was only, it leaves at this point. It was just, we have not gotten an update on more than that at this point. It's not off the radar. It's just the complexities of all of this.
Yep, just checking in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else on the chat function telling me they'd like to be heard. And I don't have any other green microphone icons open, so if you'd like to speak on Citizens Comments, chirp up. So I'll turn to Selectmen's comments. Mr. McCrisky.
No, with the time, we still got a very heavy. I'll save it for another night.
Mr. Katie.
No, I have no comments. Thank you.
Ms. Howe.
I just wanted to make note that Monday is Memorial Day. Unfortunately, we will not be having our usual parade this year, but I understand our veterans agent has coordinated a Memorial Day program to be broadcast on SMAC on Monday, so I'd encourage folks to watch that and just take a moment to recognize the day's importance and, you know, thank those veterans who have served and the families of those folks who have made the ultimate sacrifice for us on Memorial Day. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
No comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I, I have no comments. Dr. Grimm.
Just very quickly, we'd like to thank Marsha Olson and the First Congregational Church, who did a mask drop-off for us. It's been amazing how many people have stepped up to produce masks, so a big thank you to the First Congregational Church and Ms. Olson.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. So let's move on to the Housing Assistance Advisory Committee. Item A is Presentation of Recommendations. The board has received a, a formal report in the form of a draft application for Community Preservation Committee funding and an analysis of what this would do. I'll ask Ms. Howe and other members of the committee if you'd like to present it.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll probably turn this over to Mark Zemanian, the chair of our subcommittee. But just wanted to remind the board that the draft policy that was received last week, we, we've made some minor adjustments, we took the language, so it's mostly in the same form and structure that the board has already seen. And so we're, we're hoping that tonight, the board can take a few actions in approving the policy. And if, if it's agreeable, and if the board agrees to move forward with working with the Housing Authority, that we can initiate conversations for inter-agency or intergovernmental agreement with them, as well as figure out how to get this onto a special town meeting, or get approved in as quick a time as possible so that we can activate the funds, the CPA funds. So I'll turn it over to Mark Zemanian to provide the overview and review. And if there's questions that come up, I think several members from the subcommittee, or all members from the subcommittee on the call, as well as the executive director of the Housing Authority, Colleen Doherty.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for hearing us tonight. At your meeting last week, the subcommittee brought before you a draft policy and guidelines for the proposed housing assistance program. We are here tonight to discuss the final product that was sent to this board on Saturday, the 16th of May. That packet contains the following documents: the CPC application and narrative for the rental and homeowner assistance program that was primarily written by myself and Barry Kessler on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. It also contains the Town of Stoughton COVID-19 Emergency Housing Assistance Program Guidelines, the rental assistance application, the mortgage assistance application, the CPA guidelines for rental and mortgage assistance. We also included some mortgage forbearance and assistance guidelines for those residents who do not meet the program guidelines as they're laid out. We included a U.S. Census Bureau chart as supporting documentation to the policy, and a question-and-answer section from the MHP Emergency Rental Assistance Webinar that was held on the 22nd of April, 2020. And finally, as the chairman requested, an action plan with time-sensitive dates, as requested by the chair. What Stoughton needs right now is emergency funding for homeowners and renters that have found themselves in financial turmoil due to the loss of job or pay due to the coronavirus pandemic. A little help in these desperate times. The question of what the CPC could do to help this situation was asked of us, and we responded. A program was developed in a very short order through a great deal of work by all the subcommittee members, making it possible for us to grant a small but much-needed reprieve for our residents. We have accomplished much, but still have work to do. This board is being asked tonight to, one, vote to approve the Emergency Housing Assistance Program; two, make a motion to go before the CPC with the application on the 20th of May, that's tomorrow, officially requesting those funds; three, make a motion to open a special town meeting warrant, so this program can be voted on by town meeting as soon as possible; and four, enter into an inter-agency or inter-governmental agreement with the Stoughton Housing Authority, allowing the funds to be administered by that authority. This last request is an important one for the following reasons. The Housing Authority has agreed to, agreed to waive the administration costs related to this program, asking only for funding to cover advertising and legal expenses. This would make Stoughton's Housing Assistance Program one of the least costly programs in the state administratively, saving the taxpayers of Stoughton tens of thousands of dollars. And I know that Barry Crimmens is on the line tonight. He can fill in some of the details. I'm, I'm almost done with what I, I have to say. The board had can, had concerns in the beginning of being able to help all the residents in Stoughton and the subcommittee listen to those concerns. Unfortunately, CPA funds can only be used for low-to-moderate income households with deed restrictions or that are renting. We didn't give up, though. The state has made $19.65 million available to non-entitled municipalities through the CDBG CV fund, 9.65 million of which can go to homeowners and renters. The Stoughton residents can receive up to $400,000 as DHC has extended help to households making under 80% of the area median income. Four, a family of four that equates to $95,200 as the threshold. This money is open to residents who do not have a deed restriction on their home. And the best part is, we ask only one thing from the town, and that is to post the program on our town website. Residents apply directly to this program, so there will be no burden on staff, and Barry Kessler will be speaking on that in a minute. The subcommittee has worked diligently on this process for our residents, and I am ever so grateful for being able to work with and chair the subcommittee to make this effort a reality. Time is truly of the essence here, ladies and gentlemen, and I do thank you for your time tonight. I would like, if Barry Crimmens would speak briefly on, on the results of the Housing Authority meeting that they had tonight, and then Barry Kessler to talk more about the CDBG grant money.
Thank you. Mr. Crimmens, are you out there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if I may, and I'll be, I'll be very brief. And thank you, Mark, and Christine, and the other members of the subcommittee for your work to date. It, it's been a remarkable effort, and it's been a pleasure to work with, with such a dedicated and diligent group. The Housing Authority held its regular monthly meeting tonight at 6:30 PM. Don't fall asleep, Bob. And we voted unanimously to, sorry, we voted.
It wasn't you.
No, no offense taken. Housing Authority voted unanimously to serve as the administrator for this program, subject to the Board of Selectmen taking a similar vote. We also voted unanimously to enter into an inter-agency agreement with the Board of Selectmen to be the administrators of the program, also subject to a vote of the Board of Selectmen. In early discussions with our executive director, Colleen Doherty, who, who was also on this meeting, Colleen and I both felt that the Housing Authority already had the infrastructure in place from its existing programs to administer such a program, to run a lottery for the program, to deal with issues such as verification of income and the like, because these are the things we already do. And so it was felt that if the Housing Authority was willing to do so, we felt we certainly had the ability to do so. So my colleagues and I voted unanimously tonight to enter into that agreement. And we look forward to working with the Board of Selectmen, with the Community Preservation Committee, and with the rest, rest of the folks in town to get this program off the ground and get the money in the hands of the folks who most need it. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if Colleen Doherty would like to add anything to that. She has been on this meeting since our Housing Authority meeting broke.
Sure, if she's, if she's on the line.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you hear me? Okay, good. Yes, we would definitely be excited to administer the program. I definitely agree with Barry. We, it's a lot of what we do every day, so I think it's not a heavy administrative burden for us. And we would be excited to work with the town. I think it's going to be a great program. People on the committee put a lot of work into it, so we would be looking forward to assisting and getting the program off the ground on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
If I might add, Mr. Chairman, Colleen was, was very helpful in advising us and helping us figure out the guidelines and the process that would make sense. In particular, some of the nuances with the lottery, as well as the, the application forms. And so I think having her expertise was, was also extremely helpful in, in getting us to be able to move this forward and get it before the board in as timely of a manner as we were able to. So I just wanted to thank Colleen for, for her assistance as an unofficial member of the subcommittee.
Thank, yes. Thank you. Anyone else from the board?
Yep. This is Barry Kessler. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just wanted to talk a little bit about the committee, the subcommittee, that they put in an incredible amount of work in a very short period of time to come up with what I think is a good plan for the town. As Mr. Zemanian said earlier, we tried to include as many people as possible. And one of the things that we looked at doing was trying to find a way to include homeowners who don't have an affordable housing deed restriction on their property. And the CDBG program has come up with some money that's available, as Mr. Zemanian said, people can apply directly through their RAA, which is the Regional Administrative Agency for Housing. And, you know, on that, the CPA fund, if, if you move forward with this application, we will put in $500,000 towards Stoughton's people who need housing right now due to this emergency. And I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak and to present this program, and again, excuse me, to the committee who worked very hard, and to Colleen Doherty also put in an incredible amount of work and volunteered to step forward to administer this program.
Thank, very much. Thank you, Barry. I think as one of the recipients of the number of emails that have been passing among members of the subcommittee, and then updates coming, particularly from you, Barry, I think all of you deserve the heartfelt thanks of the community for the work you've done here in record time and the spirit of cooperation and dedication to helping out people within our community who, who need it. So thank you, and just as a sign of how dedicated this group is, and particularly how on top of things Barry is, I amended the agenda for tonight at 11:35 this morning, when Barry sent around a, this is, Barry Kessler sent around a message of a future opportunity for market rate housing. The window is expected to open on June 5. I wonder if you could take a minute to touch on, on what you know about that program and how it would be administered?
Sure. It's, it's a housing assistance program. It's available both to renters and homeowners. The announcement will be sometime in June, we expect. Eligible residents will be covered for up to three months of assistance at a maximum of $4,000. And municipalities themselves do not need to apply, so this doesn't cut into our COVID eligibility, I'm sorry, our CDBG eligibility in any way. And I think it's a good, it's a good way to include people who make up probably the bulk of Stoughton residents, as long as they meet the income requirements and they've been affected by COVID-19.
Thank you. Thank you. Before I open it up, Dr. Grimm, could you arrange to have the application for the CDBG CV? Too many initials there. For the DHCD is opened up for us on the town website as a quick take for people who'd like to apply? Can you upload that? And so anyone who's looking for what that program is, and maybe a link for the explanation?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's not available yet. I think, I had an update from Pam McCarthy, the Economic Development Director, so the CDBG CV funds are for the rental and mortgage assistance, and then the social assistance and micro enterprise support. And then they're going to issue a separate, what they call Notice of Funding Announcement, ANOFA, for the program for which people can apply through RAFT or the Regional Administering Agency, which for us, Pam said is small. I don't exactly what that.
Southern Middlesex.
Okay.
Southern Middlesex something.
So that's going to be announced soon, but it isn't available yet. Stuff is available. That's probably something that town staff would have to really look into if we can handle a CDBG grant program, rental assistance.
Well, if, as I understood them, these are things that those asking for assistance can apply directly and not involve town. I'm just hoping if that's the case, that we can put those connections up so that people in town who deserve the help don't have to hunt around forever and miss the opportunity. All right, so we were, we've been requested to act on four things: to approve the program, to approve the application to the Community Preservation Committee. There's another agenda item for the special town meeting. I think we can defer on that, to that point in the agenda. And then vote an inter-agency agreement. I think the first order of business would be. I think the first order of business would be approving the program. Is there a motion on that?
Motion to approve the COVID emergency housing assistance program as presented by, by this subcommittee.
Second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I vote yes on the application for funding by the Community Preservation Committee. It's a request for $510,000, $500 for program, and $10,000 for administrative expense.
A motion to submit the application to the CPC that was provided to us by, by the, this advisory committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Let me pick up the special town meeting issue and the interagency agreement together. When I got the package of materials on Saturday, I started to do some research on how to avoid delay and expedite getting this done, and getting it done quickly, particularly is there a way to get this funding approved without calling a special town meeting to do it? And I just heard from Town Council answers to my questions. I have to be candid that I didn't want to jinx it, because this is kind of a, kind of a, I, I didn't have that much confidence that it would work, because nothing this simple ever does. I asked for an opinion, and I'll be, I'll be happy to share it with FinCom and the Community Preservation Committee and the subcommittee. I asked for an opinion that I just received, that we can reopen the operating budget for fiscal year '21, that we can, in the operating budget for fiscal year '21, add a new line item for a COVID-19 emergency housing assistance fund with this amount of money, and annotate that the source of funding would be from the Community Preservation Committee. We will get an opinion from Town Council that the Community Preservation Committee could make that recommendation, and if so inclined, Town Council could appropriate that money within the annual town budget the way I've just described. The next issue is an interagency agreement, which might require town meeting approval. We could incorporate the same terms, there's an interagency agreement, in a grant agreement with the Housing Authority, same term, it's just not an interagency agreement, and that could be done without the need for a town meeting vote. So I'll share this information with everybody involved. Hopefully, this, this will work, and it'll get us to yes quicker.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, opening the operating '21, is that required, would that take the, the annual town meeting, or would that?
We'll do it, we'll do it as Agenda Item 6B, and then when, when the, when the town meeting budget goes to the floor of town meeting, it would include this line item request by the Board of Selectmen. That's the mechanism that Town Council confirmed this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Crimmens?
Could I just ask a que, I, that's very good news to hear, because obviously, one of our major concerns was how were we going to do the funding in a timely fashion? And I look forward to reading the, the opinion that you received. My, I guess my question, if, if you can answer it this time, is that, how does that relate to the funding from the CPC, I guess is, is my simple question?
That was part of a lot of conversation with Town Council, I'll, I'll, I'll cut to the chase. As I understand it, within the appropriation mechanism, it doesn't matter. First of all, this is not a capital request, so under the town charter, it doesn't go in as a capital request. The second question and concern I had was the limitation on use of community preservation funds as a way to pay for ordinary routine town operating expenses, which is, I think you've explained and helped me understand, the community preservation funds cannot be used. Then the third part of it was, well, is there a required way for community preservation funds to be appropriated by town meeting? Must they be their own warrant article, must they be in a capital article? And the answer to that is no. So as long as it's clear, and since this is not a routine operating expense for the town, we can do it within the operating budget. The Community Preservation Committee would still be required to submit an affirmative recommendation in the same way they would if it were an independent warrant article. There was a question that I got from relay, from the committee, which I asked about whether we could reopen the town meeting warrant, so that we didn't have to open the town, special town meeting. The answer that came back on that one was a resounding no, because the town charter is the town charter, and the emergency regulations and statute did not allow for that kind of a change in the procedures. So that's, that's the gist of what I've been told, and it allows us to move forward. We will have a written opinion, so everybody's, is comfortable that this will work.
Thank you.
And I, I was surprised it would actually work, because nothing ever does when you want to do it like this, if you know what I mean? So.
So with regard to the, the fourth request, the inter, intergovernment agency agreement, what are the next steps for that?
Well, we have, the steps would be that we'd get Town Council to take the proposed terms of the interagency agreement and draft up a grant agreement. And I think the only difference between them is one says grant, and the other says interagency, there's some other terms that were explained to me, they're technical. But Town Council is of the view that as a grant agreement, the Board of Selectmen can execute that with the Housing Authority, and therefore, we do not need town meeting approval. Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry. Do the funds need to be appropriated, that the grant is going to be referencing?
Yes, that's, they would, the funds would need to be appropriated, but they can be appropriated within the fiscal year operating budget, which is already within the scope of the annual town meeting warrant.
Okay.
And that's what allows us to move this more ahead.
I was just thinking of the timeline that's articulated, in terms of when everything would sort of kick in and start, and so as long as it's that July 1 date, then I, then that shouldn't be a problem.
Well, the other issue would be, if we were to call a special town meeting, there's a 42-day period from the time the warrant closes, so even if we close the warrant, you know, in May, it's unlikely we would have a town, special town meeting until after July 1st.
Yeah, I was just thinking, thinking of when we could execute the grant agreement.
I think we execute the grant agreement as soon as town meeting votes it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
But we have it, but we have it ready to go, if, if Housing Authority is willing to do it that way.
Yeah. Bob, quick, I, I thought you just said a moment ago, the grant agreement does not need town meeting approval.
That's what I've been told.
Okay, so, all right, so I think, again, our vote tonight by the Housing Authority would certainly encompass what you just described, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly. We meet next on, actually, June 16th would be our next regularly scheduled meeting, we could certainly change that date if necessary, but, but I guess what, you're still going to ask your colleagues to vote to enter into a, a grant agreement with the Housing Authority tonight, correct?
I would ask the Board of Selectmen to authorize the preparation, negotiation and preparation of a grant agreement.
Right.
Bounce that back between the boards once it's, it's agreed to, even if it's had a clause that says this agreement is subject to funding and appropriation by the town meeting. That would be fine with me, without polling anybody, so it's done.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
That motion is so made.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Mr. McCrisky will take a vote, Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Anything else we need to do on the housing assistance program?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zemanian?
Is it safe to assume Christine Howe will be representing the Selectmen tomorrow evening at the CPC meeting?
That question was actually directed to me, and the answer is yes.
It was directed to you, sorry.
On my counter.
Any, any chance, Bob, you can put what you discussed in writing, so that the CPC has a clearer idea, because I, I followed you more or less, but it, it might be tougher with that group to fully comprehend what, what you're getting at. I, I love it, I think it's a great idea, don't misunderstand me, and it solves a lot of issues, but I want proper explanation to them, so.
Yeah, I, I have, I have these piles of notes and questions, right?
Excellent.
That I'll, that I'll turn around, okay?
Okay, thank you so much, and thank the board, please, I, you know, I, I just want to say, we put a lot of work in it, in this, but we need you all to step up tonight, and you did, and I'm very thankful for that, so, thanks again.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you could sign and dig the application.
I will, and I'll, and I'll email it to you. I was asleep, did we vote to approve the application?
Yes.
During, during one of your yawns.
Okay, all right, we'll do that, thank you all, I, I think we're done with this, right?
Thank you, Bob, thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item six, town meeting, A, consider possible dismissal of warrant articles. I don't think we can do anything with that tonight, anybody have anything else you want to take up on, on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On, in the minutes of the 23rd, under the subject town meeting, I was just wondering when we took our roll call vote, was setting the date of town meeting? Because in the minutes on town meeting, if you look at them, it said that Chairman had made sense of other aspects of the discussion, he stated it was notified by a member of the intention to make a vote with response, respect to setting a town meeting, which he believes he had for June 23rd, subject to finding out some things of timing and the spacing. Hearing none, he further asked if it was the intention of the board to keep town meeting now scheduled for the 23rd, and the board members agreed to keep the 23rd date until they get more information and they can make a more informed decision. So, I mean, have we voted on June 23rd? Did I miss something? Did we take a roll call vote setting the 23rd for town meeting?
That's my recollection, and, we'll have to dig it out of the minutes, but we did set, we did set town meeting, and it may have been, you, you were tied up at work one evening and did not make a meeting, and that might have been the night we did it.
Well, then, if that's it, we just have to have the meetings amended, rather, the minutes amended to reflect that, because it doesn't say that.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to item B. So I, I will make, on review, Selectmen's proposed fiscal year '21 operating budget and the state of emergency option, that's there, because there was a question to me about whether or not the town should do something on a state of emergency, so I just put it on the agenda in case anybody wanted to do something with it.
Could I touch base on that?
Please.
So Finance Committee, last week, we're sort of going round and round on, do we go with the budget we have, which is the position I've taken at this point, because until we have actual cuts, I mean, right now, we've got stimulus cares money coming in, we don't really know what's going to happen, I can't really make major labor changes or ask for concessions until I have actual cut. Other people wanted us to look at major cuts, and other people wanted us to look at how it would look with level funding going in as we originally planned back in January, before we thought we were going to get more of the student achievement money. So FinCom requested that Dr. Marcus and I go back and do what we originally were going to do before we thought we would get an increase in state funding, and that's bridge the $472,000 gap. Doc and I spoke on Friday at length, and I agreed that I would work to find about $200,000, he agreed to find about $270,000, $270 and change, and that if we could both do that, we would at least bridge that gap. The challenge we face is that this is something Finance Committee asked us to do, but neither one of us can really change our operating budgets without going to our respective bodies. I can present alternatives to FinCom that they could choose to, you know, recommend changes, but it'd just be more appropriate that each of us brought this in front of our respective boards before we made these recommendations on the cuts we're making. So I did send to you earlier today a document that had about $209,000 in cuts, that does not come for, with any direct loss of service, it's hiring freezes, and then trimming back on any discretionary money I could find, and you have a whole list of cuts on there. So I present that to you tonight as a, an alternative that I, it looks like FinCom is going to at minimum want from us, but right now, procedurally, I'm, I'm a bit confused, it, it sounds like FinCom go to the floor with no recommendation in its current form. If we do the, the closing of the gap of the $472, you know, if the money comes, we can worry about it after, and, you know, these are cuts that we're making now, if, if I can't restore them in '21 because we changed the budget, then that's fine, we, we can function without these things. I would hope that things go okay to bring them back in '22. These aren't permanent cuts, and I, and Dr. Marcus and I both know that what we're doing now is not necessarily concession on these things permanently, but we're trying to bridge a gap to get us through what we have to get through now, if we don't get that student achievement money, because that increase in funding was going to bridge that gap. So I sent you a list of several cuts and freezes and whatnot, and that, that's what we're proposing right now.
Can I just throw out that the philosophy we've taken has been to stick with this draft, this proposed budget, and then to revisit adjustments if need be in an early, early fall special town meeting, and why, why couldn't we deal with this at that time since the student achievement money is still an unknown, whether we'll get it or not?
Well, this is what I tried to say to FinCom, I said, look, just because it's in my budget, doesn't mean I'm going to spend it. I have no intention of hiring those positions that I listed as potential freezes right now, that I, you know, if I formally cut them, just because we don't do a formal change on this budget, I can assure you that prior to whatever we know is going to happen with state funding, I'm not filling those vacant positions that I propose to freeze, or, or zero, if you will, if I have to make the actual cut. So I'm in agreement, and Dr. Marcus came into it the same way. But we, you know, we, we, I, I'm sort of in a funny spot, because FinCom is requesting that we close the gap, or else they're not going to support the budget, and I can't arbitrarily make those changes, because it's the board's budget, it's the budget I present to the board and you all vote.
Well, what if we passed, I'm, I'm just throwing out a way to, to not go further than we need to go now in order to preserve what we've got in case the revenue comes in? What if we pa, what if the board adopted a, a sense of the board decision that if, you know, by a certain date, that revenue does not come in, that it would be the intention of the board to amend, to seek to amend the budget along the lines of your potential recommendation? That would let them know two things, one, that we hope the current budget in these difficult times can still be met by the use of the sources available, and that if they're not, we have a plan that you put together to address the shortfall, if in fact, we need to do it. that we hope the current budget in these difficult times can still be met by the use of the sources available and that if they're not, we have a plan that you put together to address the shortfall if in fact we need to do it.
I I'm very comfortable with that. I, you know, I, as I said, I'm in kind of between a rock and a hard place right now and I I think it's good to have the backup budget, the city, you know, the the emergency plan and we talked about this last week as well, this group did. And so that, you know, I I'm very comfortable with that. And I think it's important that we do. And again, as I said, if the budget goes through as is, until I know I have money coming, I'm certainly not spending and we're still unrestricted spending to essential spending only right now anyway.
Well, Steve, Mr. Kavy.
Yeah, so I mean, this is this is a I said this somewhere, I'm not sure, hopefully I didn't say it last meeting, but if so, I'll be repeating myself, but when we start working through the through this budget and we were able to get just so far, so so fast with so few major issues and and between the Board of Selectmen and School Committee and the Town Manager and the Superintendent of Schools, all just finding a a cooperation where in the past we we've not been able to find that level of cooperation. I remember saying, you know, sort of thanking everybody and saying, you know, the next little while is gonna be this court is going to kind of be silly season where, you know, numbers come in and we're not really sure what's gonna happen, but it all, you know, it's, you know, if we just sort of stay strong with this, I think I think we'll be okay. And then and then we invented a brand new virus and the world is nothing like it was before. I I I jinxed it. I mean, I'm not usually very superstitious, but I thought this was gonna be a lot easier of a of a experience. Still, right now, there's I I don't mean, I I don't wanna put words in the mouths of the Finance Committee. But to the to the extent that I can understand their motivations, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they are certainly looking for a level of certainty that it's not unreasonable, but I I'd also, I I don't think it's it's necessary. There's there's still a lot of ambiguity about the numbers that are gonna be coming in. And I think that battening down the hatches is a is a thoughtful conservative approach, but also given the s- the percentage of our operating budget that this represents, I think that it's it's I think it's it's a little extreme. I think, you know, just to our operating budget right now is what, like, one hundred and five million dollars? Yeah, total. So it's forty-two thousand divided by one oh five times a hundred. This represents zero point four percent of our entire budget. And the idea that that um that that zero point four percent of the four basis points, forty basis points of our budget is the make or break of of our operating budget and that that the Finance Committee won't support any of it except for this, you know, unless this zero point four percent is addressed. I I I I'm not sure if that's, we have to kind of appreciate the position they're in. I certainly try to. But I don't think that 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 really requires a kind of response that that perhaps asking for.
And if I might, it it's a split. I don't want it to represent any one member of the Finance Committee is they are vehemently divided on this.
Yeah.
And I I think that's an important point. And and frankly, we see there's an article out there right now about the state projecting, you know, Commonwealth is gonna be at twenty percent cuts to the communities and and there are other projections that say the federal money is gonna pour into a degree that we're actually gonna float through this just fine because of federal money. So I'm hearing either extreme. I I put out another message to all of my local town managers and again, they're all over the map on what they're doing with this. I have no problem having a contingency plan. I think a secondary budget if school funding particularly is leveled, because we're hoping level may be the worst case scenario. It would be tough, I would think, for the the governor to to decimate the municipalities and ask them to make a twenty percent cut. You take a community like Lowell or Brockton and and you ask them to make a twenty percent cut or take twenty percent cut in state aid, those communities who rely even more heavily on it than we do are are going to be truly decimated. And I I'm not, I'm not at the belief that that, when you look at the the percentage of state aid to the communities is based on animal. So for them to try to make it up on the back of state aid, it's unlikely that he would or the legislature would decimate the communities. I I am in touch with our state legislature. We talk all the time about the importance of not forgetting where the municipalities are in all of this. And, you know, we we live off the most regressive tax of all, property tax and to to cut the municipalities, we can't say, okay, well, we'll just get businesses rolling up again and and, you know, we're gonna get sales tax. We don't. So we don't, we don't have that luxury. So I I've just not convinced they're gonna very quickly cut that much. And again, if they do, we we go right back to the floor of of town meeting and a special town meeting. And again, we don't spend and I will immediately, if I have that kind of cuts, be forced to bring my unions to the table at that point. But I have a much better shot of getting concessions when I have, you know, okay, you're out, you know, two million dollars.
Yeah.
Go on, I can I can negotiate something.
Is there just in an effort to to, you know, sort of appreciate their their concerns and respect them? Is there, and I don't know if the town accountant's on, probably not, but uh okay, oh, wow, wow.
I think he is.
So dedication, but uh
He's texted me a minute ago, so I think he's still there.
So is there a, is there, is there a way to basically essentially sort of encumber some sort of, some section of those funds in the event that, you know, that we essentially have to release at a later point? That would allow us to go forward with the budget, but also sort of put a lock him, lock on the chest that would require like a second review? It it kind of gives both sides what they're looking for.
Yeah, because I can give my word, I'm not gonna spend it, but that's not, that's not the security they need. I I understand that.
Yeah, they could put it in now, but we could, we could basically, you know, in some way encumber this so that that it would require an authorization, a separate authorization at a later point, a special town meeting.
Yeah, I wonder if we could encumber it and then we take it back to you all as the board to release that at some point if we had to. Because it's all really your present to to FinCom.
When is the student achievement money due to be received?
I think that's supposed to come in with the with the with the cherry shoot, with the regular money bill. I prefer a bill on that, but I believe that was all supposed to come be announced together as part of the whole state aid pa- aid package. But I I may be wrong on that. Bill, Bill?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rowe, how are you?
Bill Rowe, Town Accountant, how are you doing? The, as far as I know, that's, was that the additional nine hundred ninety thousand you were talking about? The student achievement, is that what they're talking about? Yeah, that's um, that's, you know, that's that's earmarked, well, it's not even really earmarked, it's dedicated for education, but yeah, it's all part of the general fund, chapter seventy, so. You know, I'm hearing we won't know until July or August what the final budget number is gonna be for local aid.
Well,
Does that answer your question or?
It it does. I guess that the FinCom and town meeting is looking for some policy direction from the Board of Selectmen on this issue because they don't wanna, they they don't want to be left in a position of approving a budget that can't be paid for. On the other hand, we don't have any intention of spending a budget we can't pay for. And then, you know, I know there's been some some desire from some FinCom members for us to take advantage of the partial year funding, which this this board could do. Until these options are known. I think each of us can speak on that, but I I would not go for that because of the havoc it would raise without any certainty that it would be worthwhile. So it's reasonable for them to ask for some indication from us on what we intend to do with our budget. It would be unfortunate if they think they will oppose our budget because there's a a potential to connect something with a point zero four percent of the budget. So I think we can give them some sort of policy statement and work with them so they're comfortable. But I think it's premature for us or to ask the school folks to commit to something we don't know we have to do. And then, and then, and then what? If the money comes in, we have to reappropriate it in a special town meeting? If stuff goes like we hope, these these things get knit together and and by some miracle, we make it through. Why would we wanna have a special town meeting to reappropriate two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars if there's northern need for one, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I am. The Division of Local Services, there's gonna be a form, supposedly it's gonna be online by June first about you know, the procedure for the emergency, emergency spending for fiscal twenty-one. And but like you said, it's it's gonna be difficult, you know, we 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 have to get permission to, you know, for the one-twelfth budget and then if we wanna exceed that one-twelfth budget, like we we wanna prepay our Norfolk County Assessment or we wanna prepay for maintenance contracts or things like that, that we have to get another set of permissions, so. But I guess there's gonna be more clarification from the D O S. I think the Town Manager had a better idea. You know, if we need a special town meeting in in October, the end of October to to discuss budget, adjusting the budgets or, you know, or or filling it with stabilization or something or accommodation of the two, I think, I think that's the better way to go. The only thing I would mention about that special town meeting that, Mr. Chairman, is it does need to adjourn by November fifteenth if we're gonna have, you know, to safely set the tax rate.
Got it. I I would anticipate that would be a very early town meeting. I would, I would be anticipating October if we're in trouble. To be honest with you, if you think, i- i- if we know in July or August that we're not getting that funding or we're facing a huge cut in in state aid, we'll be putting in for a town meeting as soon as we possibly can in October. But a- a- again, I think the challenge for me is, you know, FinCom has asked us to do this, but I I think, a- and you all probably know the regulations better on this than I do, but I don't believe that I actually have the authority to change a budget that you all vote. And and again, I don't want to. I I I'm comfortable moving forward with the budget that we all work together on. But this is what they're asking and now I'm in a position, I I'm coming back to you producing what they asked me to produce as a as a backup budget, but I I, you know, I just need a message to take back to them tomorrow night. Like here, I've got these cuts, but this is not what the board voted. And I think the budget that goes to the floor, really, they either vote up or down. And if they vote down on it, they they vote down and then we go to the floor, I guess is how it would work.
Well, there's no motion for us to take up. We all understand the situation. I'm I'm reluctant to make a motion myself on this, although I know what I would say. Anybody else? Anybody feel like we should do something?
Not at this point. I mean, I I really do believe that we have to to wait it out a tad and get a little bit more information. I I am you know, amenable to to developing a you know, a system that basically where it would lock these funds and and would require perhaps, you know, the even just the commitment to to not have, not not use these funds until until, you know,
Until we have.
First, until August first, right? At some point when we know the the money is actually available. Before it's too late.
Would it be all right? I don't mind virtually appearing before FinCom tomorrow night and explaining that what our, what the board's views are, that we will ask town meeting to approve the budget we submitted and we don't intend to spend money we're not gonna receive and we don't intend to be in a hole if we know that we're not getting the money and we would submit a, an amendment to the budget if that happens. I think that's what we all agreed to before.
Yeah, I mean, in some instances, the, you know, executive authority in these towns have issued, as Robin stated, hiring freezes and freezes on expenditures over certain amounts and not approving expenditures over certain amounts. I don't know if there's a memo that can accompany the budget or that was issued or if this board has to do something like that as as the authority in order to ensure that the the FinCom or to assure the FinCom that the spending will happen unless it's absolutely necessary, goes through like some procedural review. That's the only other sort of promise we can make to them.
I I uh, I know we're talking FinCom, but also I think that uh, the presumptive town moderator is also has to be to be recognized. I'm not sure if you guys have caught that.
Haven't seen that, no.
Sorry, I just wanna make sure that if this chairman's weighing in on something relevant.
Mr. McCrisky.
Yeah, just before we speak with the moderator and go off in a different direction, I think if we're, if we're gonna keep the budget the same, I think it'd be important to to at least send a letter to the FinCom, maybe jointly signed by Dr. Grim and Dr. Marcus, showing the fact that they they're working collaboratively on this issue. I think it's gonna show town meeting in in the FinCom something they haven't seen is, you know, this level of cooperation. So if anything, if we do have to come back, if Dr. Marcus and and Dr. Grim are working together, you know, I think it's gonna give the FinCom a better feeling that, you know, we are gonna address this and and we'll keep them in the loop as well, you know, where needed. So if we're gonna do that, I I would suggest that we would, you know, authorize the, well, the Town Manager could just sign a letter to the FinCom with Dr. Marcus and I just think it would show people that we are working together, but we would like to both go and, you know, see what we can get, you know, for our budgets. And if we have to come back, we're gonna do it collaboratively again and we'll, it will make the changes that need to be made.
Okay.
So I I guess I would put that in the form of a motion to allow the Town Manager to send a letter to the Finance Committee and to suggest that Dr. Marcus do the same or joint letter, whatever.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, on the vote, Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Anything else on town meeting? I'll I'll make a motion if nobody else says anything else to open the did we already do this? I'm losing track, I'm falling asleep. Open the selection budget request. Did I do this already? To add a, to add a line item for the housing assistance, COVID nineteen emergency housing assistance. And for that line, a requested appropriation of five hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Caught you out of order. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Anything else on item six in the agenda?
Just just the, if if we are interested in hearing the town moderators or presumptive town moderators.
I didn't mean, I I'm sorry, Bob. Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, good evening to everybody. I just kinda, I know you skipped over, you had to skip over the dismissal warrant articles at discussion. You know, as you know, we meet, we have a town meeting planning group with the Town Manager, Superintendent of Schools, Town Clerk, Jean Fleming, school administration officials and I T people involved. The issue is, we don't know how many articles there's gonna be. It's hard to, you know, plan for the town meeting. We don't know if it's gonna be one night, two nights, three nights or more. So I know you might not be able to get, you know, talk about the articles tonight, but at some point in time, we don't know how many articles there'll be. It's really hard to plan for how we're gonna I mean, next town meeting will be. So I'm just putting it out there, just another issue to be concerned about.
And and if I could follow up on on Mr. Mullen, we, with the governor's latest reopening plans, in some ways, we've been essential businesses because government's essential and we had some restrictions. But in some ways now, there are even more restrictions right now. We don't know what June twenty-third will hold. But we were going to do eight precincts, twenty people, more than six feet apart in each precinct. But according to what we're hearing, we cannot have that many people in a room, at least for now. By the twenty-third, we might, but at least right now we can't and we can't plan on what might or might not be. We have to go with what we've got in front of us. So we have to go back to the drawing board even on Friday. And it may get to the point where the concept of discussion is going to be very, very difficult. And it, and, you know, we've talked about whether or not somebody should, you know, mail, you know, up to a hundred words on whatever article they wanna comment on or all their articles mailing in ahead and we can put it all together for the public to read and then set up voting at the precincts, almost like what we're doing with the election, where people could come in separately and vote. You know, last week we were ready to do twenty people in a large room, six feet apart with masks. That's not now with the governor's new order, so we haven't even had a chance. So we haven't even had a chance to talk about this. We'll be back at the round, at, at the, the drawing board with this on Friday.
I agree with you, Dr. Grim.
Let me, let me, let me take a poll. I know, let me take a poll of, of, of the, of the five of us. Do you think we'd be prepared on next Tuesday night to do a final slice through the warrant to cut as much or focus as much as we can so that this is finalized for staff and the moderator and the town meeting members?
Part of the, uh, my reticence to do that in the past has been an expectation that we're going to have. I, I've heard this legislation kind of working its way around to make, make it a possible for Town Meeting to be entirely remote. And in the event that happens, obviously we'd have one, I'd have one list. And if that's not possible, I'd probably have a very different list. I, I haven't really kept up on that. Does anybody happen to, to know the status of any of, of that?
The legislation is still out there and some towns are looking at it. The problem we have with the virtual, completely virtual, with all due respect to our Town Meeting reps, we have some people who do not have smartphones. We have some people who don't have access to cable, no computer access necessarily at their homes. So the concern we have with going 100% virtual is that we may disenfranchise a number of people who are Town Meeting reps. And that's a huge concern. And that's where I was sort of going with maybe a more old school mailing in and then show up and vote at a set time or, you know, but, but again, we were ready to go with something that sort of recreated Eight Little Town Meeting halls and many, deputy moderators, we were sort of calling them. Unfortunately, like I said, I don't think that's going to work. But we did, we are looking at the virtual and Trish has been looking at software, virtual, like our clicker software can be done virtually, but it requires an app and a smartphone. And we know we would have a lot of people who would not be able to vote. So that's a lot of the problem that we're facing right now.
Sure, sure. Yeah, okay. So in that case, you know, I, I think, um, under the, um, the heading of, we only know what we know. Let's, I say, let's, let's make an effort to try to have something worked based on the facts that are, that are true as of next, our next meeting. Let's work out a, 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 a a warrant, you know.
So Tuesday night, the 26th, work, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Okay, anything else we can do on item six?
Uh, just to comment, the fewer the articles, the better we can have a, it looks like we probably be going to some type of virtual Town Meeting. So the fewer the articles, the better.
Yeah, whether it's personal or virtual, it should be fewer is the better because the virtual is going to have its own set of challenges.
Correct.
All righty.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Is there any interest in number seven to open the warrant for a special town meeting at this point? All right, I'm not hearing any. All right, let's skip to item eight, the Consent Agenda. There are two items. At the point made by Mr. McCrisky, I'd like to suggest that we defer on the open session minutes until the next meeting. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
All right, so that would leave item A to approve payroll and bill warrants and other documents to come before the meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
On the motion, Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kevy?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, we have a short executive session. I really don't think, just update on two issues. To consider, A, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A6. This is property on West Street. And B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the fire union, patrol union, police supervisors union, DPW union, dispatch union, professional and administrative union, the library union and Town Hall Associates pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. And then item C is to approve executive session minutes from April 28th, 2020. I make a finding and declare that it is against the interest of the town to discuss these matters of strategy in an open session. And it is in the interest of the town to do so in executive session. Is there a motion?
So made.
Second.
On the motion for executive session, Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kevy?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I, I vote yes. We will adjourn tonight's meeting from the executive session. We will not be back in the open session. I want to thank everyone for your patience, the involvement in, in the important issues that we discussed tonight. I really want to thank the Housing Assistance Advisory Committee members for working so hard and for everybody who contributed to getting us a good understanding of how to address the Park Street sewer. Please observe better, Memorial Day on Monday. Please take the time to recognize what those we lost did for us and to share your observation over the special being prepared by SMAC to be broadcast Monday morning. Is there a motion? Oh, we already did that.
Now, can you, can you just send me an invite to the executive session? I don't have an invite for the second executive session.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. So I'll do that. So with that, I will adjourn and terminate this connection. Thank you all. Have a safe Memorial Day weekend.